Yeah.
Or no, Josh.
Yeah, she said something when you were handing these about about it getting amended. Is that for the sign?
That's sort of the yeah, it's for the sign discussion, but also by offer to have her presentation brought to the end of this meeting instead of these. So that's something that you guys would like.
I said. Okay, if you're offering.
That she was a hero among its land. And often it had a body.
Yeah.
Are we connected?
Let me enter zoom.
Okay. Yeah, because we just have some screen sharing.
Sure, let me know when you're ready.
They're probably.
What's up?
This.
But I will.
It's hard.
Perfect.
It's annoying. There's two that are actually.
Just annoying.
They're they're like fine when they're new and then they're not.
That one is just very thick.
Can I make sure I can hear?
It's really quick.
That way.
Oh, that reminds me. Have you heard about the new office reboot?
Wait.
No.
Of the show.
Here, here's our regular. I can use the third ones.
Is it not real?
I mean, I don't know.
My admin assistant told me that they stressed her out, like watching right with us because there's something.
Feels very.
It's true.
That's aggressive.
Sometimes.
Feel like it's too soon for one. But it's.
So even twenty years.
But that's the weird part of my.
Just have to breathe, breathe a little.
If something can redo Harry Potter, they can redo the office.
Oh, I bet I didn't know about.
Really? I mean, well, they're they're making into a show.
Oh.
Yeah.
You know what I would think of people is if they just read all the episodes, why would they lie?
I mean, they was the young people or or the.
Oh.
You know. This, what if the? What if there was another giant recession? We all had to go back.
Wait, so is it a brand new?
No idea. We don't even know it's real.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, is it like the is it like the Golden Girls reboot that was just a AI generated?
Could be.
Oh.
They hang out in what? Oh, yeah, there was an AI.
There was.
Image of the Golden Girls.
They were like, this could have been Golden Girls. She found famous people.
Oh, oh.
Oh.
I just got.
Iron Man reboot. That was an AI.
Well, it's a spin off, but it is real.
Okay.
Well, I guess you have the danger paper company now.
That's true.
It's really strong like that.
Sad paper.
So.
Wednesday, May fifteenth, meeting of the City of Ipsland Planning Commission is in session. We get a roll call for attendance. Present.
Uh, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Badet.
As in.
Present.
Commissioner Hollyfield.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
You say Smith, very present.
Yeah. Commissioner Shear. And Commissioner Jones Chance.
Present.
Very good. We do have a quorum. That brings us to agenda approval. I've heard a couple of items.
We have a vote to um to approve the absence or like to excuse the absence.
Move to excuse. Commissioner Simmons.
Or motion by Brian, support by Phil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Brings us to agenda approval. We have the agenda in the packet. You have heard two suggestions for amendments to that approval. One of those items is relocating the capital improvement plan discussion until after our uh new business items. We've discussed both the site plan uh for seven oh eight planned unit development. The other uh item would be, I imagine, in old business, discussing the electronic message board uh ordinance update at the head of council. Anything I missed there in terms of updates to the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
Motion by Brian, support by Eric, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. We have up next the approval of minutes from our March meeting. Those are included in the packet for review. Any comments or questions about those minutes? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
For.
Motion by Brian, support by Amanda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. Uh, that will be the portion of the planning commission meeting that is set aside for general public comment to the commission on items for which there is not a public hearing this evening. Uh, please limit any comments to three minutes. A motion would be in order to open the public comment.
So moved.
Or.
Motion by Mike, support by Phil, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, one at a time, if you'd like to step up to uh the microphone and just start with your name, that would be appreciated. Uh, for folks on the Zoom call, if you raise your hand, we will selectively unmute one speaker at a time for the comment.
Hello, my name is Frances Todor Hargreaves. I am the impact investing manager for the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. And I am here with you tonight to speak in favor of the Peace Plaza P U D. At the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. We focus on the priority of affordable housing and we work to assist developers of color with access to capital that they've traditionally been excluded from. When the foundation reached out to developers to provide affordable and workforce housing here in our county. J twenty nine seven stepped up as a local developer, ready to invest their own capital and looking to create change. The foundation is excited to have partnered with J twenty nine seven. Peace Plaza will maintain a fully leased commercial commercial building downtown while also providing a brand new development of sixty units of housing. It will bring a new energy to an intersection that is growing with the new additions to the transit center. The project has been a great opportunity to encourage and empower black and brown developers to build affordable housing in their communities. But the timeline of this project is tight and your support tonight is integral to maintaining the capital for the development. We would appreciate the commission's approval to move this project forward tonight so that J twenty nine seven can continue their work to make Peace Plaza a reality. Thank you for your time and support of Peace Plaza.
Thank you. Uh, not seeing any other commenters in the room. Any hands on zoom? Just confirming no hands on zoom. Very good. Motion would be in order to close the public comment.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Eric, support by Brian, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That brings us to committee reports. We have uh first, the non-motorized advisory committee. Mike, anything you'd like to share with the commission?
Uh, the we have two new members like to um. I guess, I don't know if there's a formal way to do this within our bylaws to accept them onto the non-motorized committee. Um Jenny Rose and Kyler. And then the committee is also working on a um a volunteer ride uh for the first weekend in June, uh the first Sunday in June. Um. So this would be June second. Um, we're still working on the details, but um meeting and rendezvousing at Cafe Live uh in the morning. Uh, to do a little tour, a self-guided tour with some bike Ypsilanti volunteers uh to ride the newly built infrastructure along the M dot routes and then other places as desired uh within the community. Um, and learn a bit about the commute about the committee as well as biking and walking and Ypsilanti. So that's something we're working on. Um, so we're gonna try to use Facebook and Instagram to get the word out. Um, but if you're interested, June second, I don't have the exact time in front of me. Um, so let's say. Let's say uh about one o'clock. Um, one to three, excuse that, one to three. Yep, just got that to load. Um. And I think that's pretty much it at the moment.
Very good. Questions from any other commissioners regarding non-motorized advisory committee business?
Do we? Do we need to, do we need to address these applications now? Oh, it's later, it's.
It is on the agenda.
Never mind.
No worries. Uh, presentations, we have uh the capital improvement plan that has been moved later into the agenda that will bring us to old business for which we have up first the planned unit development at one twenty four Pearl and one thirty six North Washington. I'll turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Right in the mic.
One moment, I'm gonna share my screens so that uh while we take turns presenting, we can have something up for the public.
All right, perfect. Um, and by the way, I apologize. I thought I gave you the memorandum. I did. I forgot that I gave you the um applications instead for the non-motorized committee. Um, so yeah, uh, ready. So um, there's a planned unit development inside condominium being proposed at one twenty and one twenty four Pearl. Uh, it is going to be um a six-story mixed-use building. Existing conditions currently have the Centennial Building um as well as a small little commercial building on the southern part of the property. Um, it is located along the northwest intersection of Pearl and Washington Street. The lot is compliant in terms of the um size for APUD, which is point five acres, uh and it sits at six point or point six four seven acres. Uh, and the parking lot that currently exists is has forty four spaces. Um, and as you can see, the proposed development will have fourteen fifty square feet of retail. Um, one thousand sixty-two square feet of amenities and lobby and sixty residential units, twenty of which will be studios and one of and forty of which will be one bedrooms. There will be a rooftop green space as well as um for the second floor balconies facing the nor along like the northern property line. The um proposed development will reconfigure the parking and um construction for the and will reconfigure parking and have a construction, the construction of an underground uh garage. Um, the garage will have twenty-one spaces, one of which will be barrier free and two of which will be E V spaces as well as uh eight spaces for um surface parking. Um, the site condominium allows structures to be owned separately with general common elements. Um, this will, this does require a master deed. Uh, the planned unit development allows departure from the zoning ordinance upon approval of the planning commission, and it seeks to accomplish an innovative, higher-quality development that aligns with the master plan. As you can see, this is the general location of the um project. It is located within the center district. Uh, and all of the surrounding properties are also located in the center district.
All right, um, now I will be going through the P U D portion of the review um and going through the different segments of the ordinance to determine compliance with the site plan. Um, so the items that we saw to be addressed within the building type standards were the commercial frontage. Um, and they've requested departures for those issues, and we will uh actually talk about that in a bit. Um, the next thing is permission for construction or maintenance for the lot wa line or wall. Um, and we feel that some form of permission for uh the zero lot line building may be necessary for any uh any access for construction of maintenance um in a form that is determined by the city attorney. Um, and uh there are also easements or there are also fire hose lays shown in the fire protection plan uh which do exceed the property line. So we're recommending easements for those to ensure that no future construction will interfere with uh the fire safety operations necessary to uh make the building work. Um, as far as site access, traffic and parking goes, um again, oh, I'm sorry, this is a separate easement issue. Um. We would like to see permissions for construction of the eastern driveway in the existing easement. As you can see, they have proposed the driveway uh to encroach a small amount into the neighboring property. There is currently an easement with that neighboring property. However, it's only for uh ingress and egress, and it doesn't grant building construction. Um, with that, the applicant has shown uh that they are making an effort towards uh working with the neighboring property owner, and I think Andy will talk about that more as he gets uh to the motion language. Um, in addition, we're requesting additional information on truck turning within the site. Um, we just have some small comments regarding the size of the truck um in our staff report. And uh waivers needed for the ten-foot parking setback. Um, so that can be granted by the planning commission. They do have parking spaces along the east property line in the parking garage. Um, however, with a landscape wall uh and uh drainage that main remains on site, uh that can be acceptable by planning commission. Um, and a waiver may be granted as a part of this review. Uh, waste management. Um, so we do want some additional information for waste management. We want confirmation that the bins will not create obstructions on the site. Um, we, I I think first I should go over this plan a little bit. Um, so the applicant will be having four bins in a trash room on site. They'll have a waste management company that has a key to the room who will be responsible for wheeling the bins out, putting them in the vehicle and driving off. There is no temporary staging on the site or anywhere on the site for those bins to be stored temporarily. Um, but that's why they have the the contract in place to allow that company to enter and exit the the trash room. Um, they also have two bins, two four cubic yard bins and a proposed enclosure to replace the current eight cubic yard bin behind the Centennial Building. One of those bins is intended as recycling and one of those bins is intended for solid waste. Um, with the the four bins in the trash room, I believe they have two for solid waste and two for recycling. Um, the two for solid waste will be um compacted and at a three to one ratio. Um, so those two uh two cubic yard bins will be able to carry six cubic yards of waste. Um. Other information that we're looking for in this waste management plan includes confirmation that access for the refuse truck will be provided into the future. So we just wanna know for certain as a condition of approval tonight um that that access will be maintained in perpetuity and we won't end up with them um doing some kind of curbside pickup. Um, and so we wanna ensure that the the waste management is maintained internal to the site. Um, in addition, we want to discuss enforcement with the applicant and make sure that we can um ensure compliance with not having any issues with the bins um somehow getting temporarily stored in parking spaces or obstructing uh obstructing vehicle paths or uh creating other problems with litter um that may require enforcement uh issues, uh address them. Uh. Another concern is the contract information um or confirmation that the Centennial Building is also covered. So they did provide us information on this proposed contract because it is a unique one requiring the the contractor go into the building and come out in order for it to work. So we asked for information on that contract, and they brought it to us for the proposed uh new building, but it doesn't show anything about the two bins that they have for the Centennial Building, and we would just wanna make sure that those are covered because they also require wheeling the bins out of the enclosure and uh can't be picked up in a conventional uh mechanical way. Um, because of the unique uh internal drive and uh the limitations for truck access to that waste enclosure. Um, finally, uh, there is a requirement for a concrete pad. Uh, the applicant recognized this and updated their architectural plans. We just wanna make sure that all of those plan sheets are consistent. Um, and we did notice that there were some discrepancies throughout because this was a previous error that we called out and then um wasn't wasn't fixed on all the sheets. So we just wanna clear that up. Um, so as far as screening and landscaping goes, uh, we wanna, as mentioned earlier, whatever permissions uh deemed necessary by the attorney for construction of the wall, a fee and lose needed for the tree. Uh, they are one tree short on Pearl Street. And a shortage of the total landscaped area. So there's about five and a half percent, I believe, landscaped area. They required ton. Um, and planning commission can grant a waiver tonight as a part of their approval. The other approvals needed are um listed up there, and so that's just going to be a condition of the approval tonight. If it's approved, um. And uh as far as the site condominium goes, uh, so as Josh mented mentioned, this is proposed as a site condominium. So the three buildings themselves are viewed as condo units. It's not individual. I think this has been confusing. Um, it's not that there's individual condo units within the Centennial Building and the the units of the uh residential structure are condoed. It's that each building themselves is a condo unit. Um, and the general common elements are the shared spaces between those condo units. So there's unit one, unit two, and unit three being the three structures on the site. Um, they'll have shared vehicular and access and surface parking. Um, the parking garage is attributed only to the users of building three, which is the newly proposed building. But all of the surface parking is intended for buildings one and two. Um, we do want further information uh from the applicant on how this will be enforced. Um, and uh planning commission may wish to include some sort of condition related to that. Um. The individual condo units will not share or will not share utilities, um but they will all be granted access throughout the site to their respective utilities. Um. The association will maintain the services on site. They will work with the city during the construction for parking. And following or it they they are looking to work with the city, and I think that's up to city council. Um, and following construction, uh, they will stick to the allocated spaces on the site uh for use of the property. So the general concepts that we see are understandable. We have the information we know to gather exactly what their intent is with the site condo. They submitted a draft master deed, um, and they did clarify with us that they don't intend to provide any stricter use or occupancy require restrictions than what the ordinance or planning commission requires. Um, and that is something that the ordinance asks about when uh proving a site condominium. However, that master deed does have several fill-in-the-blanks kind of highlighted throughout where they could uh put in any use or occupancy restrictions for the three buildings. So we just wanna make sure that that's included as a condition of an approval um to ensure that that is not imposed on the site. Um, Andy, do you wanna take over?
I'll take over. Uh, so going through the P U D departures real quick, we kinda introduced them a little bit earlier. Um, the first one is the frontage buildout. They are proposing sixty-nine percent of frontage buildout, but the requirement is ninety. Uh, staff does totally understand that uh departure because of uh just the whole plan and the layout of providing an access drive. Uh, we do recommend that departure be uh provided by planning commission. Uh, there's also the departure from distance between openings. Uh, we've really uh deferred a lot to the H D C in terms of this standard. So the H C C uh deemed the uh especially the first story uh facade as uh as very complimentary to the uh Centennial Building. So we uh from a staff perspective, would just like to defer to them. Uh, we also recommend approval of that departure. Uh, similarly, in those lines is the ground floor transparency requirement. Uh, from our calculation, uh, we got forty-three percent, even though sixty percent is the uh zoning arts requirement that is along with the same lines as the uh previous point, the H C C did approve this. Uh, it seems like uh not leaving exposed concrete columns and not uh in making sure that the uh styles on that first floor match each other uh were the priority uh in the H D C process. So we are uh kind of from a staff perspective, uh deferring to them there. In terms of traffic visi- visibility, uh, they have that zero foot uh clear vision triangle at the ingress. Obviously, that's a standard that is uh not often met in a downtown. So we um we do recommend that this be met, but we do want more mirrors to be installed at different turning points. Uh, just to ensure ultimate safety, to ensure site. We saw some mirrors were added in the parking garage, uh, which are a benefit, but I think even uh just on poles uh throughout the development were applicable, uh, they should be provided. The landscape island at the parking islands, those are required at any parking row. Uh, there is not any provided at the east side of the Centennial Building. They are crammed with space a bit with that little uh building number two, the commercial building, as well as the proposed loading space uh at the other edge. Uh. Staff does wanna see that loading space uh continue, so we, from a staff perspective, uh prioritize that loading space in lieu of an island right there. It's also a non-conformity as it stands right now, and we are understanding to uh letting it continue. Parking space distance to walls, uh, there is a uh three-foot requirement uh that any parking space shall leave a three-foot gap from the end of that parking space to the nearest wall. They leave at least two feet uh throughout the interior of the parking garage. Uh, that's two feet is a common number that's replicated in other parking situations such as curbing to sidewalks. So we've deemed that as a acceptable departure uh to prioritize uh the saving of space in the uh parking garage. Uh, next departure is the parking space width increase. Uh, when abutting a wall, uh, there is a requirement that the width increases from nine feet to ten feet when abutting a wall. Uh, we do recommend this with a slight little condition that that parking space in the northeast corner of the basement floor garage be made into a compact car space just to uh decrease the likelihood that a big bulky car parks there and causes any kind of issues hitting a wall or uh having somebody next to them not be able to open a door or whatever. Uh, parking space dimensions of, there is a required total width of two tiers of ninety-degree parking to equal sixty-two feet of width. They provide um, they provide, and I actually, I believe that number might actually be fifty-eight feet as a as their smallest number uh on the uh interior of the ground level. So they are short on that, but that's a departure. We understand when you're maximizing space by having smaller uh smaller tier widths. Similarly, with the tiers, uh, the uh, there's a thirty-six uh total tier width for one tier of ninety-degree parking plus the aisle. They provide thirty-three feet minimum. Um, at the part that's uh north of the Centennial Building, uh, they have provided some uh ideas of vehicle turning radiuses. So we do think that standard vehicles can uh back out adequately. And we do believe there is still width for the trash pickup to navigate through that space. Uh, overall, with the departures, uh, a few were decreased from last meeting. Uh, I believe uh one of them was one of the trash uh departures. Uh, they came into more compliance with trash pickup. And the other one, I believe, was another landscaping one. But I can't, I'm actually blanking right now. I apologize. I do know two departures were eliminated from last.
Added the uh landscape island on the angled parking.
Yep, yep. So they made more compliance. They complied more with the added island at the north, north of the Centennial Building. So looking at the P U D proposal overall, uh, there are some clear community benefits to the plan. Uh, one is just the housing type itself, uh, and new build of new safe housing. One is just the housing type itself and new build of new safe housing units downtown. The just access to the YTC, the transit center is key. You know, increasing walkability. Depending less on car to on car transportation is key. We want to encourage that as much as possible downtown. The rooftop garden and the open space on the rooftop is a benefit. That's a nice amenity for residents to enjoy. And the fitness center is also a good amenity for active lifestyles for the residents. We do have a few discussion points we'd like to just bring to planning commission's attention in a way. The future use of the Centennial Building, we think is important. The applicant last meeting did clarify that they do intend to remain offices. So that's a helpful suggestion. But we want to just make sure that any development here is not at the jeopardy of the health of the Centennial Building uses going forward. We want any plans for unloading and loading to be considered. There is some proposed activity in the street right of way that will take that will require city council approval for traffic control orders. That is the removal of on-street parking spaces with the additional loading space. We as staff, planning staff, that is, do like the idea of adding some on-street loading space. Because it's been widely talked about that the loading space might be a little small on site. Waste management, we do believe great progress has been made in terms of the waste management logistics. The kind of the style of pickup and those logistics are now clear to us. We just want to make sure planning commission is appropriately safeguarding any potential enforcement issues in the future and ensuring that if anything happens to the current contractor, which is which has made it clear that they can pick up there that any changes are just accommodated for very clearly and very safely. Planning commission may consider the master plan alignment. Staff had some narrative in the staff report about that and how it meets the master plan in terms of a concept in development. And then we do have some concern about impact on surrounding properties, especially in light of fire code and fire department comments that were submitted to the city on the based on the last plan set. I will get into those in a moment. Yeah, I think in one other thing about the Centennial Building use, and we will bring this up in the approval conditions. Staff does want to ensure that the retail space in the in the building three, the new building is actually kept as retail into the future. The project is being proposed as mixed use. We want to truly remain mixed use. We would hate to see any kind of you know, we what we don't want to see is the development turn into a full-scale just apartment, multifamily apartment with accessory uses. We want to make sure that there is some use diversity on site.
And additionally, if the site were to to take out that retail space and just use it for like, you know, accessory uses to the apartment, that would then constitute a major amendment to the PUD and require them to go through the entire process again because it changes their use from mixed use to just multifamily.
Good point, Josh. Thank you. So looking at a couple suggested motions. I we do want to make it clear that this is actually the last regular meeting that planning commission has on this topic in terms of passing it off to city council during the timeframe as provided by the zoning ordinance. The planning commission has ninety days to review such a PUD since the time of its public hearing. That public hearing is held in March. So this is the last regular regular meeting you will hear and review this PUD. So really, we want you to make a motion to approve with conditions or a motion to recommend denial. The case does go to city council for ultimate approve. In terms of potential PUD approval with conditions, we have this written out in the staff report. The really word for word here, you are required to cite findings that the the PUD meets the intent of the ordinance and that you are approving the departures as listed in the staff report. There are a couple waivers that we actually see as waiver approvals rather than departure approvals. So we want to make sure that you do adequately cite waivers as waiver approvals. Because those are technically a little bit different of a of an item than a departure. So those are the waivers that you do have the power to approve in any site plan case. And then in terms of approval conditions, I just want to quickly touch on a few of these. I think it's really important. Number three, so number two DPS has some authority in this site plan. There is rightfully work being done, so that needs approval. I I they are proposing watering through a hose, so not any type of system. But just watering of the trees to keep them healthy. We just want to make sure that DPS is amenable to that, that that's allowed. Also, the city council has some authority here too in terms of the on-street fire lanes, on-street loading space and the removal of parking spaces. This would need to go to city council for those revisions to the street. Fire Department had a letter in the in the packet. They provided a letter on this plan set. They have some very important concerns that they voiced to us as staff and wanted to share with planning commission. We will, I will cover that in a moment. City engineer needs approval of this. Obviously, there's engineering aspects to be reviewed. Accessory use to residential apartments, we don't want that to end up. We don't want the retail as presented to turn into apartment accessory uses because we want it to truly be mixed use, as Josh mentioned. In terms of the the easement or the the driveway encroachment. Julia touched on that. The applicant did provide proof to the city that they are in conversations with that Trinity Health property that they're looking to get approval to indeed conduct the construction work to alter that kind of the the area that's currently governed by that easement. So they're looking to just get the approval from that shared easement holder. We do require, we would like to require that as a condition of approval that that occur prior to final plan approval. The mural, we do want consent. So the city wants consent by the neighbor. We're not looking to restrict by means of an easement or anything like that. But we do want if if somebody's going to be crossing over that lot line, we do want there to be consent offered. And applicant confirmed that consent has been given. In terms of number ten, I do want to make a few things clear. We staff is a little bit we're a little bit hesitant to actually move. We move towards that green text because we are leaning towards an easement. However, we would like to actually omit that green text for the purpose of this review for now because we want to defer this issue to a permission acceptable by the city attorney. So staff does not know if an easement is the appropriate avenue here to get permission to do wall or construction maintenance with that with those neighboring properties. If there's a different kind of permission that is allowed, such as a just a notarized statement from the neighbor or a private agreement that the neighbor can provide. We are kind of deferring that idea to the city attorney. I think an easement, we staff, an easement would be great. It's a little bit more powerful, but it we're really deferring this issue to Mr. Barr. In terms of number eleven, this is a very impactful item. The fire department has said that the hose lays need permission. So the fire department needs permission to enter the properties for hose lays and
And and the truck.
And the truck, and the truck, yep, east of in the Trinity Health Building. So the fire department put in writing that they need the truck access and the hose lay permissions. Staff believes the only way to actually have permissions for something as important as hose lays is through actual easements. Because we do not want a structure such as a fence or anything like that to be built by the neighbor to restrict firefighting if as far as deemed it required. A couple other things. So actually, twelve through twelve through, I'd say twelve through nineteen, actually, twelve through eighteen are very, I would say, very simple fixes that are very common conditions of approval, like in any site plan situation. There are a few notational items, typographical items on a site plan, just notes that improve the, I guess, improve the clarity of the site plan. Those are issues I I'm not going to dwell on right now, but they are documented in the staff report. Number nineteen, we just want confirmation that Runko, the contractor, has provided to serve building number three is also doing it for number one as well. And recycling for number for building number one as well. For condition number twenty, staff does have some concerns about any code violations in the future regarding trash pickup. The last thing we want to see is is issues with trash. We don't want to see bins scattered throughout the site that are accidentally left by a contractor or mismanaged, maybe by whoever's in charge of dumpster and trash pickup. So we are suggesting a condition where the city does have a mechanism to require increased increased frequency if there's demonstratable code violations or demonstratable reason to increase that frequency. And then also, as as provided in the public hearing last meeting, there is a legal complaint filed by the adjacent owner about regarding easement rights. So we do recommend that that be solved prior to construction. We understand that that's probably something that could carry on a little bit longer. But we we advise that that be resolved prior to construction, maybe not prior to any approvals, but prior to construction. A couple other items that came up. The six spaces of off-street bicycle parking are great. We want to just make sure that those are continually provided. They do meet baseline compliance with bicycle spaces by providing twenty-seven storage spaces. However, we want to make sure that they do continue to provide those six public spaces. We want to make sure that the we documented it earlier in this presentation that the any change to the waste management provider be accomplished in a smooth manner so that the pickup and drop-off is always occurring on site and not in the right of way. And then just regarding some of the documentation that was provided regarding underground storage tanks, we want to make sure that that is that the brownfield issues are taken care of in compliance with state and federal environmental compliance standards. In terms of if planning commission wishes to make a denial recommendation, obviously, it's a denial recommendation to council. You don't end the process here by any means. But you would need to cite findings as that's required in the zoning ordinance. Some of those findings might be a lack of permissions or easements. Lack of really demonstrable proof that some of the things like hose lays can be laid and kind of in terms of being laid and provided in terms of an emergency situation. We don't want a fence or anything built by the neighboring property to affect an emergency. And then with the final three points, whatever find if you do think there's findings in terms of the PUDs not creating higher quality development. If you think the waste management plan is insufficient. Or if you think that there is inadequate pedestrian circulation within the internal drives and parking areas. You may wish to cite any of those as a as a finding for denial recommendation. So the PowerPoint was long. I don't know, Julia, if you want to conclude with something.
Well, we also have motion language for the site condominium in the packet. We just didn't have slides on those. So I do want to call attention to that and make sure that they also review that motion. But the language that we have there is pretty simple. It's not as much to go through. It's really those use and occupancy restrictions and that the master deeds reviewed by the city attorney is that.
And that the the site, the exhibit B site plan sheet is provided a little bit more detail.
Very good. Thank you. I have one feels critical, one critical question on the recommendations here. With the we have competing recommendations for both denial and approval kind of included in the packet. Both those recommendations for approval and denial cite the the obtaining of easements of the necessary easements and the ability to construct on-site as proposed. That shows up in the denial, like we might deny the site condominium on the finding that there are not necessary easements to access and construct the development. But then also cited in the approval is that the necessary easements be obtained. It feels like that is being talked about kind of from both directions. And it feels like the distinction between those falls to the the preference of the city attorney as we kind of condition or as you recommend in the condition. I wonder if there might be a city attorney present that cares to comment on that.
Good evening. My name is John Barr. I'm the city attorney. And the city charter requires that there be a city attorney. So I'm an officer authorized by the charter to represent the city in all legal litigation, to represent the city council, give them advice and legal support and also boards and commissions when requested. In this particular case, the staff has come to me with some legal questions concerning this development. Let me say first of all that this is an exciting development. I think it's the first thing downtown since the business school. So I think it's a big deal. However, what the planning commission, what this team has recommended are details. But of course, the devil is in the details, and so we have to be very careful of those details. And the two main things that the staff is concerned about with my perspective is first of all, fire safety. And safety, of course, other public is a huge thing for the city. And the fire chief thinks that they need the permission of the trucks to have access and to lay hoses on the north side and on the east side. So I think that's an important thing. I think that would be relatively easy to get. It doesn't, I think, necessarily have to be an easement, but at least there should be some sort of permission or agreement to do that. And then the main thing is the the city should not give permission to someone to build something on somebody else's property. And in law school, they tell us that ownership of property is like a bundle of sticks. And each of those sticks represents a type of interest in the property. One stick would be the the right to live on the property. Another stick would be to drive on the property. Another stick would be to rent it, to mortgage it, and so on. So in this case, I checked the Washtenaw County Circuit Court records, and I see that there is a lawsuit pending concerning this property that has to do with the north boundary of the property. And the lawsuit alleges that at one time the property was all contiguous with the northern property. And that was split. And in the split, there was reserved a driveway easement on the northern end of the property that belongs to the northern people, the Mowers. And that's in court. And in my opinion, the fact that that lawsuit being pending is a defect in the title or it's a cloud on the on the title. And the city would be in a difficult position if they give permission to build and the people build on somebody else's property. So I think this is a serious issue. The lawsuit is pending, and the last thing I saw on the issue was there's a motion for a summary disposition, which means that I think the plaintiffs, the Mowers, have moved the court to give them a judgment. And if they get a judgment, then they will have a legal right to an easement on that northern part of the property. So what is an easement? An easement gives you the right to go on the property and to, in this case, to drive vehicles and so on. And it does not allow the the other property to build on that easement. So I think the staff is inside is interested in having this move forward. But we don't, they don't not, they do not want to be in a position that they're giving permission to build on somebody else's property. So we talked about what could happen. Well, there's a couple of things, probably two main things. This could be enough for the for the planning commission to deny the application until they prove that they've got ownership and the lawsuit is resolved. Or you could give tentative position with conditions that it go up to city council and but only be approved once that lawsuit is resolved. And but only be approved once that lawsuit is resolved. I've taken a bit of time to explain that. Do I have any questions? Yes.
I I have a question, uh, and it won't lead me to an opinion, but I'm not understanding. That the the building itself. That that the building is designed in a disputed area. I thought the dispute was about. Using the driveway. And that there was some overlap at some point in time, a very small overlap, but I didn't understand that the building. Is designed in a disputed area. Am I wrong in that regard? Is is the building?
I don't know if you're wrong tonight. My impression is that the building is built up to the lot line on the northern part.
Yeah, I think we're we're talking about two separate lot lines here. I think that that's some of the confusion. You might be referring to that lot line on the east where there is the drive path. That is uh, crossing that property line. The question in in. The the topic and question here is the lot line to the north.
Correct.
Or which the building goes is designed right up against the lot line, but the exact location of that lot line is what's in doubt. Is that was my understanding?
No, what's in doubt is. Whether or not that lot line includes, uh, whether or not there's a space. To the south of the lot line that is a driveway, a a common driveway. That's the issue. And if it is. Then legally, uh, the the developer cannot build on somebody else's property without permission.
My my understanding is that. The building is this, it the the, the north lot line shown on the drawing is an undisputed. Lot line and that it's it's beyond that that is disputed. Now that.
Well, well, let me, perhaps I could clarify it this way. Some years ago, the city used to have a heritage festival. There was a big deal down in Riverside Park. And hundreds of people, thousands of people, maybe a hundred thousand people would visit the city during that period of time. Well, my son was in the Boy Scouts and the Boy Scouts are looking for a way to make money. As though they convinced the Centennial Center owners to let the Boy Scouts use their parking lot to park cars and charge for it, which they did. And one on one of those occasions. We had a very angry citizen come up because his car was towed. Somebody came in and towed the car. Well, he parked on that northern part. And the adjacent owner had the car towed because they said they had, that was their property and they didn't give anybody permission.
That's my question, and I'm not resolved yet, but.
I I think maybe a way to think about it is the the lot line itself is not in dispute. It's the use of the. Property on the north side of it, or the property. The actual strip of land on that lot line. So if there's an easement, then. Although that land belongs to the parcel to the south, the subject parcel here. Its use is only for the the property to the north, and that's that's the issue is who can who can use it. Um, I I think who owns it is not necessarily in dispute.
Pretty close to what we're talking about, yes.
Very good, and I wanted to clarify one bit that you said towards the end of your uh, initial opinion there. You'd talked about not being able to proceed with the construction without unified control of the site, but in your opinion. Pending kind of the the agreement of planning commission, conditioning that as part of the planned unit development is acceptable. Here for us to have a legal basis to proceed with approving a PUD.
Yes, I could, I could approve a conditional approval legally.
Very good.
But I wouldn't approve construction on it.
Right.
Till the title was resolved.
Right, understood.
The other two, the other things are, I think it's very important to get that permission for the fire hoses to the the fire. Department to be able to properly protect the property and the adjacent properties.
Very good. Any other questions for the city attorney while we have them?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, back to questions for staff then. I think that that kind of answers a big part of the discussion from uh, when we discussed this in our March meeting. I know we went through a lot of the uh, waivers, a lot of the variations for parking um, for some of the. Uh, dimensional requirements for some of the trash uh, enclosures. I don't know that we need to touch on all of those in as much detail tonight, given that we. We see a lot of those um, similar to the same uh, variations that we talked about in March. Some of those things we talked about have been improved here. In the revised site plan, I see that we have no conditions to be made for bike parking, like staff mentioned. I see we have uh, fewer conditions to be made for some of the the. Um, parking dimensions. We have fewer conditions that need to be made for the lighting. So I think we have some uh, improvements on those ends. Um, with that noted, kind of a focus on just changes from the March meeting. Any questions for commissioners for staff?
I have one and.
Yeah.
And it may very well just be a typo or or misprint, but in the TC a report on page 166. There is a change in direction and the angle parking.
What page is that?
166. Yeah, yeah, but it's part of the TC uh.
Yeah. Yeah, and confirm we had our public hearing in March meeting.
That's the G U technical report. That was done months, months, months ago. So that was a part of the site name, the middle. That's just looking at the soil boring. And doing some of the pre-construction work uh, to make sure that the site's ready for the all that.
Yeah, and the city engineer uh, just requested that that be uh, something that be provided more upfront.
Yeah, because I didn't see it before, and that's why I guess there's a change or not.
Kind of just a new document for you tonight, but not super, it's pretty technical, obviously.
Uh, if there's no other clarification for staff, we'd welcome the applicant up again if you'd like to share. Uh, on changes from this uh, application from our March discussion or anything else that you'd care to comment to planning commission.
I do have one question for staff about the um. Um, about the importance of the mixed use here. Um. A take of that this would. Because it has to be approved as mixed use. We can't just approve it as multifamily, but um, I mean personally, I really don't. I really don't care much if it changes later. Um, I think uh, in the note here. Um. The the argument is compelling that, you know, you don't know how markets going to change. Obviously, more housing would be great. If it's switched to an office use, which I guess, I guess still counts as mixed use, but if the use changes because of demand or because of some other. I mean, I. We should be adaptable. I think that's part of the reason we're in the situation we're in. So um. I don't care too much about that, and I don't. I don't know how important of a condition that is, you know, to make this uh, some kind of a standard in perpetuity. It just seems a little. Seems a little much.
Is that a question for staff or do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I just, yeah, how important is that? Um, other than just, we can't approve it as a multifamily, obviously, but what is the rationale behind that?
That's up to planning commission to discuss, but you would want to include a condition, right? You would want to include some kind of condition to allow it to be flexible.
Yeah, you could, you could actually either condition or finding. That maybe uh, warranted, maybe flexibility is warranted in this occasion and. Then we could put something in the eventual development agreement that says something along the lines of. Use, use flexibility is what is allowed and does not constitute a major amendment or something along those lines.
So we could, we could, we could do that in the approval of a mixed use development?
Correct.
Okay.
Only because it's a PUD.
Right.
Uh, if there's no other questions for staff, I'll look again to the applicant.
Good evening uh, to the commission and to all of you tonight. Thank you again for. The opportunity to consider our project again. I'm grateful to come back and um, uh, after having worked with staff to improve the project. Uh, I won't um, spend a lot of my time. I want to make sure um, that both the architect, if that's okay through the chair, that our architect can come up and address some of the. The questions that were raised and kind of speak to some points, and then also um, a legal counsel answer one of the questions that was raised as well, if that's okay. Uh, but overall, um, again, just grateful for opportunity to make an investment here in the city I call home now, um, and grateful for the commission's uh, willingness to continue to. Um, work through this with us, uh, through the staff and um, the opportunity to work with our neighbors on uh, solutions to drive forward development. Um, just two quick uh, points of clarity that I can provide uh, to some of the questions that were asked. Um, one was about the future use of the Centennial Building, just kind of verifying that. And uh, as iterated in the last meeting, we certainly intend to um, continue to operate that um, into the foreseeable future as a office building. Um, and as far as what we perceive to be the the viability of that. Um, has been both strengthened by through our engagements with tenants recently over the last few months and kind of understanding our long-term tenants. Uh, and their willingness um, to continue to stay on even after development. Uh, occurs, but we also think the, because of the smaller nature of our units there, which are um, really on a smaller size, somewhere between 200. And at at the most a thousand square feet, but most average about 300 square feet. These are smaller unit sizes uh, that we think will also encourage entrepreneurs that might stay in our uh, property. Uh, to perceive the building as an amenity, having uh, both live and work uh, on the same property, being able to live there and then also potentially have a a small space that they could. Um, uh, lease uh, for um, starting a business. Um, so we think the viability long-term will be a a great amenity. Both for the downtown and also for the the tenants that will come into the space. Um, and then uh, the other one is just sort of a um, a s- small correction on the easement. To the east of the neighbor to the east. Um, it was mentioned that that easement only allows for egress and ingress. Uh, but that easement does um, allow for improvements within um, the the access easement for the landscape. Um, and and the and the maintenance and the repair and improvements. Of the landscaping and site elements within that egress uh, ingress. And it only acts for us as um, the grant, the grantee of that easement, uh, the grantor, I'm sorry, to um, uh. Both reach out to our neighbor to the east um, and make them aware of those improvements and also get um, approval of that. Uh, which should not be unreasonably withheld. Um, they did send over uh, support of that on yesterday, and I believe it was. Um, so it wasn't submitted for this meeting in time, but uh, was just forwarded to the the planning team a a short while ago. So we do have that support for them for uh, the small improvements that are being made in that egress ingress. So that said, I'll um, bring uh, let's bring that list first to speak to those elements and then the the attorney to speak to the other questions. Thank you.
Through the chair, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Rogers. I am legal counsel for the applicant, and I wish to address Mr. Barr's concerns and also. Uh, first of all, to thank this body, I have been assistant uh, senior attorney uh, for the largest municipality. In the state of Michigan, and I know that the work that you do is extremely demanding and people are not always as grateful as they uh, are. Uh, in holding grudges. So thank you for your service. Um, I I just want to review for this uh, board's um. Benefit, the timeline under which the complaint was filed. Uh, at the last hearing on which this matter uh, came before this body. It was mentioned on the record that at 4:14 PM on March 20th, which was the day of the hearing. Counsel for the city received an email indicating that the complaint had been filed. That timing is very interesting. Uh, for the record, defendants have timely filed their responsive pleading. And that was due yesterday, and we timely filed yesterday. Mr. Barr mentioned on the record that uh, when he uh, went to take a look to see what the docket. Uh, reflected for this matter that he saw, he said a motion for summary disposition. Um, and he thought that it had been filed by plaintiffs, but we do want to clarify that defendants have filed a motion to dismiss. Uh, two of the three parties because plaintiffs, for reasons that are. Inexplicable, uh, named Mr. Scott and Mr. Huff in their individual capacities, and they are not owners of the property at all. When the time is right, defendants will file a motion to dismiss because we believe that plaintiffs' claims have no merit. As was rightly observed, we believe by Commissioner Smith during the last hearing, you have been put in the unenviable position. Of being requested to adjudicate this matter. Mr. Barr has indicated that he is concerned and he referenced. Uh, in real property, the bundle of sticks. There is no question that applicant owns this property. And Mr. Jones Chance put that on the record. There's no question that they own this property. So the unified control question has been answered. The court has not adjudicated, has not determined in any manner. That there is a prescriptive easement as plaintiffs claim. As uh, Commissioner Smith indicated at the last hearing, if parties have an opportunity to file a complaint. On the day of a public hearing, bring it to your attention without giving the court an opportunity to examine it. Then what would stop any person who begrudges a construction project from doing the same thing repeatedly? This body does not have statutory authority to substitute its judgment for that of a circuit court. What is notable is that in situations such as these, plaintiffs do have a legal remedy. They could have petitioned the court for injunctive relief. They could have asked the judge to issue an order. That would have provided this body with the instruction not to move forward until the court first had an opportunity. To examine this case on the merits. Plaintiffs failed to avail themselves of that remedy. I would argue it's because they would have been unsuccessful. And so since plaintiffs did not avail themselves of the proper legal remedy, it is not fair. And this body does not have the statutory authority to allow them to come here and use you. As the remedy that they should have taken themselves with the circuit court. And so because of that, we would ask you. To resist the urge that you may have to deny this complaint particularly for that reason, because it hasn't been adjudicated. And you have to ask yourselves whether you want to set that kind of a precedent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again. Uh, my name is Adam at Mayewski Architects. And I just wanted to uh, use a brief bit of time to discuss some of the questions that were raised specifically relating to um. The fire department and firefighting on the site. Um, you know, obviously, fire departments, fire chiefs have a lot of power to decide how fighting is going to be happening on the site. And with a good reason and the interest of protecting the public. Um, one claim that was made that I I questioned the validity of is this idea that an ease, that a fire department needs an easement to access. Any property, you know, you don't stop, you don't have the power to stop the fire department from accessing, provided it's available for access, your property to fight a fire. You don't sue the fire department because they came on your property to fight the fire that's. Going to jump to your property. Fire departments are allowed access to fight a fire, to private property. Um, the second bit is about the hose lays on the north and east side. Um, this is, you know, certainly a contentious issue, a bit of a gray area. Fire departments, especially in suburban areas, they expect to be able to get around to the sides of all buildings and use their hoses to fight a fire. Um, we're going to work best we can with the fire department um, to get them to hopefully agree that in um, urban environments. You don't always have access to the sides and the backs of buildings. Um, the zoning code allows buildings to be built right up against each other and flash together as a party wall condition. And um, I think you have to consider that um. If the fire department plans to stick to a precedent of requiring three-foot minimum inset of every property in order to get their hose in between each property. You're going to end up with a downtown district that is spaced apart more like, if you're familiar with form-based coding, more like a T5 district rather than a T6. Which is kind of what this district is known to become, a very intense and dense urban area. So in that sense, I I, it it feels, there's a little bit of an uh, at odds. Condition between the zoning, what the zoning code is incentivizing and the way the um. Well, we don't know for certain with fire chief or fire department is going to decide, but they appear to be leaning toward a little bit of more conservative interpretation. We're going to continue to work with them, uh, hopefully have them understand that this is a building that um, has added fire protection, has stand pipes, fully strinkler building. Um, higher fire rating uh, than our construction type than often residential buildings are built. It's a type three above and a non-combustible at the first level. Um, so with all that in mind, we are going to work with the fire department and. So with all that in mind, we are going to work with the fire department and hopefully have them understand that a fire in this building is usually going to be fought through the standpipe system, through ladders. Yes, we showed the hose lays onto the north and east side because we wanted to show the fire department what was possible in the current condition. It's true to say that the neighbors to the north could build a fence. That's absolutely true. However, it's also a registered historic building, so you don't expect there to be a structure being built there in the future. A fence is about the only thing you could build just in terms of the dimensions of the site and the historic nature of the building. So, all that being said, it's just, it's just to summarize that we're going to continue to work with the fire department. Hopefully they agree with us. We do these urban buildings in Ann Arbor. We do them in other cities. And yeah, you know, sometimes you, fire departments, it's a little unclear what they're going to decide, or maybe they thought they understood one thing, and when the drawings develop and there's a lot more information available to them, we kind of come to an agreement. You know, so, so yeah, that's all I wanted to clarify about the hose lays. That's all. I think I'm all right. I think I'm good here. Thank you.
Great. Questions for the architect? All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have a bit of a discussion among Planning Commission on a couple of these items. I want to, want to kind of start just to set the table a bit. I know this is kind of picking up the thread that we laid down a bit in the March meeting. I don't think it's ever been the intent of Planning Commission to adjudicate on the status or the outcome of the real estate dispute between the applicant and the property to the north. I think what, based on what we heard from the city attorney, that gives me the confidence that we have the legal basis to proceed conditioning the outcome of that civil case without using that civil case as a basis for denial. Is there anything that the commission wants to discuss about that purpose before we move on to actual Planning Commission discussion and kind of the merits of the development and not the merits of the legal dispute? Okay, if we're getting, sorry, you had something?
No, I was just, I was just going to say that, yeah, I think that, I think conditioning it is appropriate. You know, regardless of whether we can adjudicate, so we do have a statutory responsibility not to allow or permit someone to construct on a site that they don't have control over, even though the ownership isn't disputed. Who's allowed to use it is very obviously in dispute, so. Yeah, I think if we can add some conditional language into the, an approval, that would make the most sense, and I think it is definitely in our warehouse to do so.
Very good. Any other thoughts? Okay, moving on to the merits of the development. I mentioned this in our March meeting. I like to see housing presented downtown. Like we've seen a lot of housing that's presented on the outskirts of town. This is dense and it's a little, it's a little unusual that it's dense in the ways that it butts up against some of the limits of the Planning Commission. If we're going to put density in the city, I think we put density right next to the transit center, right? I think we put density right next to other buildings of a similar scale in the city. Those, I think, are benefits to the application that we have before us tonight. I mentioned that it does rub up uncomfortably on some parts of the zoning ordinance, so I think we need to talk through some of the waivers. I mentioned earlier that we talked through those, several of those in March, and I don't know that I see a need to revisit them extensively tonight. Obviously, other commissioners can flag individual waivers or conditions if we like to. There were kind of three things that stood out from the staff presentation that I think it's worth us getting into some discussion of here. Brian, you kind of opened discussion on the first one about us conditioning there not being a residential use on the ground floor retail space. I can't disagree with you necessarily, but it feels like we're approving a lot of housing, and talking about housing on the ground floor like it'd be a bad thing feels a bit contradictory to me.
Oh, no, I was, if I said residential, I definitely meant retail. What I meant is I don't care if there's retail or not on the bottom.
Right.
Oh, right. In fact, I wouldn't care if you converted the rest of, you know, 124 too.
So, so I guess, I guess what I'm tying that back to in the packet, though, the condition presented from staff in the, oh, see now, I lost my page. In the recommendation for approval of the PUD, staff includes condition number six, and that condition reads, "No accessory use to the residential apartments may occupy the ground floor retail space." That is the condition that you were questioning with your point, correct?
Right, and also, any conditions on, since, since, I don't know which number, which condo number it is, maybe it's one, Centennial Plaza now. I also don't really care what happens. I mean, I don't, I really don't.
I definitely do. I'll cut you off right there. I definitely do.
You don't have to cut him off about it, but.
I mean, it's, it's, it's an older historical building. It was previously a hotel, which is quasi-residential. That sort of a floor plate works pretty well for residential use. And it's not like it was always an office building. It was a hotel. So, I mean, uses change as needs change, and I don't think we need to be inflexible about it, but, I mean, if, I can be swayed.
Mike?
I think I'm swayed by staff's opinion that as our, as I heard them say, as the PUD for this does not permit an accessory use, and if it wanted to be changed to an accessory use, then entirely new PUD needs to take place because we're judging it under the mixed-use standard, not a multifamily housing standard. So, that's when I'm trusting staff's recommendation that why they know accessory use should be conditioned in here.
This is one of those instances for me that I think we've talked about with some other, other consideration for applications where if it is essential to the characteristics of the planned unit development, then why are we adding conditions on, like with redundancy? Right? And so, so to that point, if, if this PUD is for a mixed-use development, mixed use can mean a lot of different things. It doesn't necessarily have to mean ground floor retail there. And so for me, it feels like, to your point, if, if your concern is keeping it mixed use, that's built in to the definition of our planned unit development that we're considering here. So why are we conditioning specific uses in specific places on top of that?
I think that that's a fair point. If my, my point would be, I would not with the waiver of the ground floor transparency if we're losing, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing it as a trade-off. I want more ground floor transparency for activated corridor and activated downtown. So, I'm willing to keep an activated floor space with a condition. If there's no condition, I'm not willing to have a covered up ground floor space. Our minimum is 90. They have less than 70. I believe it was 67%.
Improve from 35, right?
Sure, but, but we're judging this plan, not the last.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the last plan was definitely an issue. Yeah.
I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, I know there's a trend for, you know, no window coverings, people like that, so. I'm not, I'm just, maybe, maybe it's not practical. But I don't, I don't think we want to remove flexibility because, again, I think that's, that's why we are where we are with housing and other things. I mean, the needs for buildings may change in the future, and I think we should be building in flexibility, especially if we're using a PUD process. I mean, the other question is, why, why do, why does this particular condo have to be mixed use if the entire site is already mixed use? We've got a little retail pad, we've got an office building, and what if this were completely residential? It's still, the site is still mixed use. And really, we're only requiring that condo three be in itself mixed. So, again, I, there will always be some mix, probably, and I just don't think we need to constrain either future owners or, you know, future developers to the site to something that may not meet the needs in the future. I think, I think this is where we relieve ourselves of problems later down the road.
Yeah, I just, I just think we have a disagreement on that. That's fine.
Any other voices on the accessory use on that ground floor retail space?
I'm, I'm, my only thing is that, and I'm not going to beat the dead horse, but total agreement with Commissioner Jones Chance. I, I, you know, I just don't think we need to make that a condition where we, we're locking specific building into permitted use when there, the ability to have some flexibility there. I, I agree with you.
Thanks for that.
I would like to remind all commissioners to speak into their microphone for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the other conditions that I thought is valuable for us to touch on is the easement for the fire hose lay on the adjacent property. And I wanted, this was maybe a point of clarification with staff because I know that you mentioned the language here with the easement to the north was specifically changed to be permissions with neighbors to the north in a manner acceptable by the city attorney. The language with the hose lay still calls for an easement. I wonder if you could speak to kind of the different approaches on each of those uses?
Yeah, we can do that real quick. So, we appreciate Adam's feedback as well, but our biggest concern is that we don't want future, if the fire department is relying on that hose lay for firefighting, we, the neighbors could build a zero lot line building from two to five stories tall by right on that lot line. And we don't want something to obstruct the hose lay if the fire department has said that the hose lay is required by plan.
Or the truck.
Or the truck. The other concern is the truck. The fire department wants a truck back there at the Mercy Health parking lot, Trinity Health parking lot, and.
That's the, the item addressed in condition 12, fire truck.
Correct.
Played eight and a half feet wide and 47.
Well, no, 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 that's, that's different, actually. So, the condition regarding the truck.
It's in the fire department's report, not our report.
Yeah, sorry.
Not conditioned here. That, that's conditioned by reference, the applicant shall obtain fire department approval of the site plans.
Yes, and adequate hose lay easements.
Okay.
We do, so we, I think Adam brought up a good point about the stand pipes and fully sprinkled buildings. We, I'm not a building code expert, so I don't know if an alternative is that you ask Adam further explain his interpretation on the code and what that means for fire safety code interpretation and what that means in terms of what kind of exceptions can be made when you have a fully sprinkled building and you have a stand pipe. And if in his belief, just for the record, so that when this goes to council, that we have a record that a professional has stated that there are exceptions and fire code can be met without easements.
And I, I do think we have time for additional fire review before now, and this plan goes to council, and I think we would be comfortable with, instead of requiring the easements as a condition of approval, it's the easements or a fire protection plan that is, meets approved by the fire department that doesn't require any access to adjacent properties.
So let me ask this then, if we're conditioning that the applicant shall obtain fire department approval, this is, again, are we, are we making a more restrictive redundancy by also conditioning the hose lay easement? Or is this going to be adequately covered if we just condition fire apartment approval and then the fire department figures out however that needs to look for them, since they're more qualified to comment on firefighting than I am?
From staff, we would prefer it be something like fire department provides approval on the plan or an alternative plan before the city council meeting agenda, before the council meeting review, because I think it's, it's very imperative that this is figured out ASAP and not on the back end of the project.
I guess, Mike, one of my questions here, we as a commission have never been asked by the fire department to condition hose lay easements. And, you know, you can look out the window and see a handful of buildings also in the center district that don't have hose lay easements. And so that, that's, that's where I'm getting hung up here on, on us conditioning that, you know, that potentially being overly restrictive on this site and not warranted with how the rest of our center district is zoned or laid out.
I think it has to do with the fact that it's a six-story building, and so it's, it's the height of the building and the bulk that's going in that requires the 150-foot hose lay.
Ryan, you had something to add there?
I mean, yeah, some of the buildings were built before the, before the hoses were available. But.
Houses invented.
I mean, yeah, but. But yeah, I think this was, this was one of my concerns last time, particularly with the property with the east, because that, that, that line is, is used for parking now. And, you know, while I take the point that in a dense urban, urban environment, you don't always get access to all the sides of the building, it doesn't mean that you intentionally design or approve such a building. And so, again, we need to get ahead of problems before we have problems, and a lot of fully sprinkled buildings burn down. That's why we have fire departments. And if this is an issue that can be remedied, it should be remedied. I'm not saying, I just, it needs to be a condition. I'm not saying we hold up an approval because of it, but it, it does need to be handled. I mean, how would any of us feel if something did happen with 60, 60 dwelling units inside and?
I think my question is, does it, is it conditioned in number four, or is it conditioned in number four and 11?
Well, I think based on what the memo we got from the fire department, they would be very unlikely to, to approve anything that didn't meet that standard, so I think it's pretty well buttoned up or not.
It sounds like the applicant is hoping to have more discussion with the fire department on whether or not it's necessary. So I think it's fair to let them do that.
Yeah. That, that report from the fire department reads, "Permission must be obtained from the property owner." Sorry, permission must also be obtained from the property owner of the building located just north of 136 North Washington due to hose lay operations being proposed on their side of the easement. That is not a condition from the fire department requiring a hose lay easement.
I think as, as the planners, that we, we would advise that comes in the form of an easement just because we want to make sure that there's no construction that would prevent them from getting that access in perpetuity if that's necessary. I think that's kind of a, a technical legal path that maybe the fire department doesn't have a full grasp of, but they just want to know that they need to be able to get there. Um, with that, I do think there were some early discussions with the applicant about maybe a fire pump, which they didn't include, which may mitigate the need for a hose lay. I don't know if they want to speak to that.
Let's see.
Thank you. I was scrunching my face, hoping that a real question would be asked of me. Thank you for that opportunity. So I would, hopefully I can clear up a couple of the logistic things here. First about the fire code. The fire code section regarding the hose lays is written such that the fire department has a lot of ability to, to accept different dimensions of hose or to allow a certain site to, basically, they can agree, and this usually just happens during the permitting process, which I guess another one of my points would be that the logistics of getting an approval from the fire department before the next city council meeting seems unlikely, especially because it would kind of put them under, they're kind of taking a risk in, in a way of approving something that hasn't gone through permitting. But also, I just wanted to make it clear that in the fire code, you know, that originally sets out, you know, you have to do this 150-foot hose lay. But there are exceptions to that. One of the exceptions being are one of the abilities of the fire department to be able to accept that. The conditions of that are, you have a fire pump and, or you have a sprinkler system and standpipe system. And yes, we do have a fire pump that goes along with our standpipe system. So, so basically, you know, I forget the exact other, you know, the other conditions are easier to me, so they don't come to me at the top of my head at the moment. But, we have met all the conditions to allow the fire chief of the fire department to accept that. So it is within their power to accept the hose lays altogether. And that's why I say we'll continue to work with the fire department because we don't know what they'll decide. Although I think someone mentioned, maybe it seems likely they're leaning one way or the other. I guess my counter to that would be, I'm not 100% certain that they paid a whole lot of attention to all the details of the building, the sprinkler system, you know, fire protection and the fire ratings and all that stuff. So, so that's why I say we will look to, to speak more with them. One last point, I'll get off the mic in a second. Julie, you mentioned the height of the building. Although I think I would have made the argument in the exact opposite manner, high-rise buildings wouldn't exist if you had to fight all of them with a hose. You simply can't squirt a hose, you know, 500 feet in the air. Obviously, we don't have a 500-foot building, but it, it just goes to show that there are, you know, exceptions to these things. It's kind of the base code. You kind of meet some conditions of fire department, you know, you work with them, they agree with you. Okay, we'll allow this. You know, that's typically how the process goes. And again, that usually happens during permitting. So, it, it would be hard for the fire department probably to prove this early and, and an exception to the fire code is what I'm saying. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you restate your concern? Uh, my concern is that we are conditioning easements for fire hose lays. And it, it feels like there's ongoing discussions with the fire department about how to adequately fight any hypothetical fires on site, and those don't always necessarily need to include hose lay easements. And so I worry that that, that, that is conditioning a specific outcome of negotiations with the fire department and not the whole range of potential outcomes of negotiations with the fire department.
And the fire department is asking us to obtain in writing, utilize their parking. Can someone read that off the screen? I can't find it in my packet. Number one.
Permission must be obtained in writing from Trinity Health to utilize their parking lot due to truck placement and hose lay operations happening on their side of the property. Permission must also be obtained from the property owner of the building located just north of one thirty six North Washington due to hose lay operations being proposed on their side of the easement.
So how is the requirement for an easement not a direct response to this?
I think that the thing that, that sort of, the thing that gave me pause is that the condition before this, we are talking about securing permissions. And in this condition, we're talking about obtaining easements. And I'm just curious if we're putting an overly onerous requirement on the hose lay discussions here. We talked about a potential, um, a potential option to obtain approval of the fire department prior to council. I think that's what we need. And it feels to me like planning commission conditioning specific outcomes of that is, is getting in the way.
Or maybe, and I do get Adam's point too. We don't want to put fire department on the spot to rush a review. That's maybe not fully, uh, thought out yet, but we maybe the alternative condition is that fire code at least, uh, can, can, uh, confirms that alternatives to hose lays being laid in that manner are possible to the fire code and need to be, may need to be further explored by the applicant. Um, because it sounds like by the applicant, not to speak for Adam and the applicant, but it sounds like the building is still possible to be designed without those hose lays as presented, right? And so maybe the condition is fire code, fire department uh, approval is required before council meeting, fire department confirms that alternatives without the hose lays are possible by fire code or something along those lines. Does that make sense from other staff here?
Other
Thoughts on that? Thoughts on that alternative?
So is this, you would eliminate eleven? And maybe expand on four?
Would eliminate eleven to expand on four. Correct.
All right.
You would say that?
Yeah.
And do you have an idea?
No, I, I do just want to comment from a staff perspective that if, if the fire department concludes hose lays are required, I do think that we uh, even if it just says permission in their letter, uh, as staff, we, we do recommend that that comes in the form of an easement because it's recorded in perpetuity. That ensures that if there's any transition in property ownership or anything like that, uh, that a, a simple agreement is not, uh, merely enough to ensure that they are granted that access in perpetuity.
Yeah. Understood. And, and I guess in my mind, it feels like conditioning approval of the fire department gives them the flexibility to require that, right? And so I know, I know fire department might not be recommending the specific legal maneuvering to make that happen. Um, but I want, I want their intent to be carried through here.
I, I think that's, uh, fine. Our, our concern was more with it getting past city council with that as an outstanding issue though. Um, because, you know, I think, I think at this level of review, it's, it's certainly okay. It's just, um, if it were to proceed beyond um, city council and still unresolved for an extended period of time, and then the applicant would need to come back to the drawing board and come back to planning commission. Um, that could be a little bit more difficult.
Good. Mike?
Uh, what if we, um, substitute out the, the word hose lays for, uh, fighting? So that it would say the applicant shall obtain, obtain easements for firefighting on adjacent property. Cause that is what the staff wants and it um, addresses your concern of this prescriptive.
I think it's still prescriptive by requiring easements, right? That's the thing is, is I think staff's comfortable with the alternative here that we condition approval of the fire department, then we leave the rest of the fire department. Right?
Well, that's not what I just heard.
Well, I think, I think, I think the second part of conditioning on the fire department is just the fact that there is an alternative to the hose lays.
Right.
And that that be met by the applicant with approval by fire department.
Right.
Or else they do have to.
Or else they do need to have the hose lays with the easement.
I agree.
Is that in line with your understanding?
I just, I, let's just move on.
Okay. Did you pull your mic down?
I just.
Oh.
Uh, the last condition that I wanted to touch on here, um, nineteen calls for additional information on waste management services for building number one and recycling services. We heard a bit in the staff presentation about some of those trash services. I was unclear on which additional information is still needed for that.
So building one is the centennial building. So the contract that was provided by the applicant addressed just building number three, the new build. But it did not confirm that Runco, the contractor is picking up for building number one. Um,
Or that they're doing recycling.
Yeah, or that they're doing recycling services for building number one. There were calculations and those are helpful to know.
Hmm.
Um, but it, we'd still, we don't know if Runco is the contra, is the provider for that building number one.
Or, or for recycling.
Or for recycling.
For either building. They didn't, recycling wasn't on the contract at all.
Yeah, it wasn't on the contract at all. You're right.
Okay.
Should we be more specific in that? Condition?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Uh, yeah, I think that additional information is just a little bit general. Um, so if what we want to see is both, um, we can maybe clarify that the bit about and recycling services applies to both, uh, buildings. Uh, is it one and? Which one, which one's the small building?
The whole site.
Technically the whole site, you could say.
Okay.
You said they only gave a waste management plan for number three. Is that what you said?
Correct. They just, they, they provided the contract information for just number three.
So if we said clarify recycling plan for the whole site and a waste management plan for buildings one and two, that would probably be the condition.
Yeah. Confirm recycling is provided for the entire site and that, uh, waste management contract applies to building number one. Something like that.
That do we care about too?
I mean, I don't think much waste is coming out of that building, but.
Okay, got it.
Um, those are the points that I thought it valuable for us to touch on in conditions and waivers from the staff presentation. Uh, I don't want to dismiss any concerns that other commissioners might have about items that I haven't brought up. Uh, so open floor for discussion on any other topics. Uh, hearing none. We can move to some motions. I would entertain a motion first on the site condominium.
Did? Can I ask a question?
Please.
Did we, did we come to a friendly agreement on how to handle eleven?
Uh, yeah, I, I, um, I think we maybe had some disagreement from Mike, but at the, the, um, not, I think not willing to hold up that discussion on that point. Uh, my understanding of our plan here is that we strike condition eleven that specifically requires the easement. And we instead add additional language to condition number four, uh, requiring fire department approval of the site plans prior to presentation of this application to council.
And any easements which maybe requires something like that.
Okay.
Well, yeah. And I think one of the points too was that it sounds like there's an alternative to providing the fire hoses as presented.
Right.
And that could be, I mean, is, should that be explicit that that alternative be explored and approved?
Yeah, that planning commission doesn't need to see it again. So maybe we should say something.
Maybe you say fire department approval is required.
Hmm.
Fire department shall confirm that alternatives to a fire hose lay are an option before councils review.
Well, but I don't need fire department to approve an alternative because I'm fine with the default option that we've talked about of the applicant acquiring the, the hose lay easement, right? I'm okay with any of those options. I'm not trying to be, my goal here is to be as, uh, as, uh, to reduce any like prescriptive restrictions on the discussions with the fire department. I want to condition fire department approval and let the fire department handle the rest. Um, because I feel like anything else is outside of our interests as a planning commission.
And if the fire department doesn't grant approval because we don't condition an easement.
Right.
Then the project doesn't get approved. Like I think what I'm hearing staff is they, they want, we're, we're looking, you guys are looking for us to document it may be explicit how this approval and whatever is required of the approval be documented. And as part of our condition. So that is that right?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we wouldn't want you to approve plans that show hose lays on somebody else's property without saying that that also would require an easement. So if you're saying you're open to something, uh, that is, uh, consistent with whatever the fire department approves, we also just want to stipulate that if it is as shown on the plans, they would need appropriate access provided.
So the applicant shall obtain fire department approval of the site plans prior to presentation of the application to council and shall obtain easements for hose lay if required.
Are you inserting the hose laying language in this?
That, that last sentence that I said is exactly how I would word this condition based on what I'm gathering here from staff. The applicant shall obtain fire department approval of the site plans prior to presentation of the application to council and shall obtain easements for hose lay if required.
Oh. Do you want to see like a preliminary approval by fire department? Just so it's not their final sign off. Yeah. I mean, cause fire department works at multiple points in the process, I think. And they'll look at plans too at the end, uh, when it's goes through engineering review. So I think something along the lines of fire department preliminary, applicant obtains fire department preliminary approval prior to city council and applicant, um, secure easements for hose lays if required by that. Something along those lines.
I would just recommend against specificity.
Okay.
And, and have more generality. I, I'm a wholehearted agreement with the architect. I mean, this hose laying easements are.
What about, is it? So staff needs to know how to implement conditions on the backend of a project. And it sounds like it's the spirit of planning commission who potentially require a permission or easement if fire department thinks it's required. And if that's the only option to fight fire because these alternatives are not what, what fire department wants. Then can we hold them to the easements and permissions? Is that the spirit of what you're discussing? It sounds like it.
If, if the hose lays are required by the fire department, then the condition requiring the easement for those hose lays would be valid.
Yeah. And if not, so.
If not.
Have.
I think the if required is doing a lot of work.
Amanda, to answer your question, no, we had not come to a conclusion about the handling of condition eleven.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Just to add more
Fuel to the fire.
Fire department. Um, if, if the fire department ultimately decided that they wanted to make it more restrictive than the plan that's here.
Hmm.
Would it make sense for us to say this plan or an alternative plan as agreed upon with the fire department? That the, it protects the applicant to what's already been presented.
I think that that is heard in the first sentence of that. Yeah, the, the, the fire department has to approve the site plans.
I, I guess I'm just saying like.
If the fire department comments change the site plan substantially, then the site plan is changed and that like invalidates the PUD that we're talking about, right? Cause we would have a substantially different site plan.
I'm, I'm in accord with Amanda as well. I think that's a good idea. I like the generality of your suggestion rather than the specificity.
Julia, what did you add there?
Uh, I, I, I think, uh, minor amendment is required to go back to planning commission, right? So once you guys approve it here, there can be at least layout changes.
A minor amendment is allowed to be approved by planning commission without it going back before council and rerecording PUD documents and such.
Right. But if they, if they made modify, if they resubmitted plans now and council that went exceeded the conditions that planning commission's recommending and changed the plans in any way, they would need to.
That would be a major amendment.
That would be a major, it would require
Yeah.
Planning commission to review the plans.
I, uh, have we've approved a lot of site plans with conditions that the applicant shall obtain fire department approval of the site plans. Um, I'd be hesitant to, uh, condition the site plan differently.
Yeah, I think you're revised, um, condition with the if state, if statement is achieving what we're all trying to talk about, which would then lead to the elimination of condition eleven.
Right. Okay.
Or that.
Okay. Somebody hit me with a motion.
Think Amanda was.
Oh, no.
I'll, I'll do the first one.
Yeah, you do the first one.
Um, I would make a motion, um, to recommend that city council approve the site condominium for one twenty four and one twenty Pearl Street. With the parcel IDs as noted in the staff report with the following findings and conditions. The findings that the application, the site plans meet the standards of section one twenty two, seven, ten, seven, eleven, seven, twelve, seven, fourteen and seven fifteen. And the following conditions, the applicant shall work with the city staff to provide satisfactory master deed and exhibit B documents consistent with the site condominium layout and the PUD application as presented. No use or occupancy restrictions may be placed upon the development beyond any already regulated under the requirements of the, uh, city of Ypsilanti zoning ordinance or as required as a condition of the approval of the PUD by the planning commissioner, city council. And lastly, that the site condominium complies with the state condominium act fifty nine of nineteen seventy eight.
Support.
Motion by Mike, support by Amanda. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dunwoody.
Port.
Uh, Commissioner Battis.
Support.
Commissioner Davis, junior.
Port.
Commissioner Hollyfield.
Support.
Commissioner Smith.
Support.
Commissioner Shear.
Support.
Commissioner Jones Chance.
Yes.
Site condominium is approved.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to motions for the planned unit development.
Uh, I move to recommend city council approve the planned unit development for one twenty four and one twenty Pearl Street with parcel IDs as noted in the staff report with the following findings, waivers and conditions. Findings, can I just say as noted? Or do I have to say all those? Um, findings, the application, site plan and land use comply with one twenty two dash three eleven, one twenty two dash seven oh two, one twenty two dash seven oh six, one twenty two dash seven ten, one twenty two dash seven eleven, one twenty two dash seven one two, one twenty two dash seven one four and one twenty two dash seven one five. Planning commission approves the departures listed in figure six of this report with the waivers. The ten one, the ten feet parking lot setback along the eastern lot line be waived per section one twenty two dash six eighty three H as the applicant is proposing stormwater management techniques. And a minimum three feet tall landscape wall is provided. The ten percent site landscaping area requirement be waived per section one twenty two dash six forty one C as the planning commission thinks it's fine.
Great question. Um.
Uh, friendly amend that later. Uh, and the following conditions. Um, one, all conditions of the site condominium approval shall be satisfied. Two, the applicant obtain Department of Public Services approval on any right of way work as proposed. Two, the applicant obtain Department of Public Services approval on any right of way work as proposed by the project, including the proposed watering bib. For street trees. Three, the applicant obtain city council approval for on-street firelands and on-street loading space, including the removal of parking spaces. Four, the applicant shall obtain fire department preliminary approval of site plans. Prior to presentation of this application to council and shall obtain easements for hose lay if required. Five, the applicant shall obtain city engineer approval of the site plans during detailed engineering review. Six, no accessory use to the residential apartments may occupy the ground floor space, retail space. Seven, all discrepancies between civil and architectural plan sheets must be corrected, particularly showing the concrete dumpster enclosure. On both plan sets. Eight, applicant shall provide an updated agreement from the shared easement holder to the east for construction within the shared easement. Prior to the final plan approval. Nine, the the proposed mural shall only be permitted with consent by the neighboring property owner for the site access. Ten, applicant shall secure permissions with neighbors to the north and east for maintenance access to the exterior of the building. In a manner acceptable by the city attorney. Eleven. Fire truck shall be displayed as eight and a half feet wide, foot wide and forty-seven feet. Long on plans. Twelve, the westernmost parking space north of the of building one shall be compact car space. To further reduce chances of pedestrian to vehicle conflict. Thirteen, the parking space in the northeast corner of the basement floor of building three shall be a compact car space to enhance circulation. Fourteen, additional mirrors shall be provided at all vehicle turns to improve sight lines. Fifteen, lighting fixture projecting into the right of way shall be recessed within subject property. Sixteen, fee and lieu shall be provided for one required street tree. Seventeen, surface parking spaces allocated to buildings one and two shall be signed, shall be signed as restricted parking. Eighteen. Infirm. Eighteen. Confirmation of a recycling plan and waste management plan for building one will be provided. Nineteen. Sir, wait, I missed one. Nineteen, if. Refuse pickup is determined to be insufficient by multiple code violations within three hundred and sixty-five days. Or by documented traffic backups on the public streets during the garbage pickup process, the city planner may require increased pickup frequency. To ensure proper waste management. Twenty, civil case Mauer Karen et al versus one twenty-four Peace Plaza LLC. Did we, they shall be resolved. Okay, be resolved with a finding that the applicant has unified control and development rights to. The entire property per section one twenty-two dash seven oh two A.
I offer a friendly amendment. That on the second waiver, the finding to waive the ten percent site landscaping requirement. Is made as planning commission observes that departure to be necessary for the infill development style of this downtown location.
I accept your friendly amendment.
Very good. We have a motion by Amanda. We have support by Phil. Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Dunwoody. Commissioners Bettis.
Support.
Commissioner Davis Junior. Commissioner Hollyfield. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Shear. Commissioner Jones Chance.
Yes.
All right, the PUD has passed.
Very good, thank you. Good luck.
I'd like to thank my third grade teacher. Read out loud in front of Montreal.
It's always massive, planning commission. Uh, I'm gonna call for a five minute recess. We'll convene at nine oh two. We should probably vote on that, shouldn't we?
Oh, yeah, uh, support.
Does it count with Robert's rules if I have to say hit me with a motion?
Hit me with a motion.
Hit me with a motion.
Yeah, usually that's a motion.
Yeah.
Feeling better than I thought today, though.
Yeah. We're just getting started. That's okay, we are recessing until nine oh two. No, you're okay. That's totally fine, okay? Right? Yeah, take, uh, take the out while you have the chance.
No, I, yeah, I think that was.
Who seconded the site condominium vote, motion? Who seconded the site condominium motion that you made?
First of all, first one, Amanda.
Well, the first one, yeah, I did.
Uh, that was, uh, filled in. That one I remember. I might not have repeated. I try to, I try to repeat that.
Yeah, I'm sure it's on the record.
Yeah. Sure.
Had to turn down overtime, otherwise I'd have been getting up at one o'clock to go to work.
Still not great.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's why I turned it down. Yeah, that's not gonna work. But when I look at the packets, I'm like, yeah, that's not. I might, might break a record tonight.
Did not think it was gonna be a quick one.
Yeah.
I was pretty proud when planning commission was named in the lawsuit. That was fun. That was a fun moment for me. I don't think so. I have to check. Yeah. Lucky, Andy. Uh, I have nine oh two. We're gonna resume.
Back at it.
Back at it. Well, I think this has been a fake, this has been a fake recess the whole time anyway. Uh, we're jumping back into new business. The first items on new business for the evening are the reappearance application and appointment application. For a non-motorized advisory committee. Um, Mike, I know you had mentioned these applications at the top of the meeting. Anything that you wish to discuss about these specific applicants before we vote to appoint?
Uh, I think they're both great applicants, uh, very passionate about non-motorized built environment. It would be great to have on our committee.
I'm excited to hear that. Thank you for vetting them.
Most intercepted nominees.
Both of them?
Absolutely.
Not one at a time?
Nope.
Okay, both. Uh, motion by Phil, support by Brian. Uh, we'll do a, uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Commissioner Dunwoody. Commissioner Bettis. Commissioner Davis Junior. Commissioner Hollyfield. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Shear. Commissioner Jones Chance.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, the next item on new business is the site plan at seven oh eight Pearl. Turn it over again to staff for a presentation.
All right, so hi, everyone. Um, Constantine is proposing a fourplex on a vacant lot at seven oh eight Pearl. Uh, each of in the, within the fourplex, each of the units are going to have three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. And the applicant is also proposing, uh, five total parking spaces, one of which is accessible and three bike racks. In terms of the items to be addressed for site access, traffic, and parking items, um, the applicant. Basically, I just wanted to kind of like, I don't know how long J T nine seven was gonna take, so I wanted to kind of just. Hit the keynotes with what needs to be addressed for seven oh eight Pearl, so hopefully this one will go relatively quickly. This is the third time this has been brought to planning commission. Uh, the site plan expired the first time, then the site plan also expired the second time. Um, which is why it's being brought, uh, for the third time. Um, so yeah, basically, um. The applicant shall pursue a variance for, um, the driveway width. Um, the applicant shall adjust plans to allow for a van ADA space. Um, the applicant shall pursue a variance for the excess of parking. Um, in terms of the landscaping items and, um, to be addressed. The proposed dumpster enclosure shall be nine feet in height due to the dump, the proposed dumpster being eight feet in height. Um, the zoning ordinance requires the dumpster enclosure to be at least a foot taller than the, um. And the actual dumpster itself, which is stated in section one twenty-two dash six oh eight. Um, the applicant also, um, shall provide trash calculations for the. The ten cubic yard dumpster. Staff sees that as a little bit excessive for a four unit, um, or fourplex essentially. Additionally, any new and existing landscaping is to be maintained in good condition, uh, by the land, by the owner. And, um, a waiver from one street tree due to the location of utility pole. Um, and the existing tree lines, uh, with an already established street tree along the same block face. Um, in terms of departmental conditions for the Department of Public Services. Uh, the applicant is responsible for obtaining permits from the Department of Public Services before beginning work. On any portion of the city's right of way, including sidewalks, curbs, and driveways on Pearl Street. Specifically, I want to. Point out the, um, drainage basin that is being proposed in the city's right of way. Um, and additionally, a maintenance agreement must be established for the rain garden in the right of way. In terms of the, uh, fire department, they just want to ensure that the basement egress windows meet the required code. Due to some of the bedrooms being located in the lower level, that can be seen on the bottom picture for the left elevation and also be. Kind of seen on the rear elevation picture. Um, and so with that, I have the, um, the findings, waivers, and conditions. Um, that planning commission may wish to consider. Uh, with the findings being that the application substantially complies. Um, and with the one of the waiver, the one waiver being that they obtain a waiver for the one street tree due to the location of a utility pole. Yeah. In terms of the conditions. The basically staff would like to see the applicant adjust their plans to allow for a van ADA space. Um, the applicant shall also pursue a variance for the driveway width. The applicant shall pursue a variance for the excess of parking. This is, um, an interesting situation because, uh, basically. Um, in the zoning ordinance, I believe it was that they needed seven or eight parking spaces. I believe it was seven. Um, but in the ordinance, it specifies that any, um. Development within the walkable urban district that immediately gets halved. And so essentially, they needed to have, um. That basically brings it down to three point five, which, you know, rounds up to four, but they have five. Uh, with that said, the ordinance also states that it cannot, the parking, uh, cannot exceed more than a hundred and twenty percent. And with the five parking spaces, it exceeds it, um, and is a hundred and twenty-five percent. With that said, we are recommending a variance for that specific case. Um, additionally, the site plan approval is subject to the Department of Public Service, the fire department, and Yucca. Um, any new and existing landscaping is to be maintained in good condition by the owner. Uh, the applicant shall provide trash calculations to substantiate the need for a ten cubic yard dumpster. And the proposed dumpster enclosure shall be nine feet in height due to the proposed dumpster being eight feet in height.
Very good. Any questions for staff? No, you were ready. Uh, I wanted to ask if, um, we talked about variances for a few of those items, the driveway width, the excess of parking. You mentioned that the site plan has made it before planning commission. Um, do you have information on the fate of those variances from previous application?
Yeah, so they did get a variance for both, twice for the driveway width. Um, the variance for the excess of parking is a new addition as part of this review. Um, they have not ever received, um. Approval for that before.
Very good, thanks. Uh, if there's no other questions for staff, uh, we can, we'll open the public comment and start with, uh, comments from the applicant. A motion would be in order to open the public comment. Motion by Phil, second by Mike. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, if the applicant is present and would like to kick off that public comment, you'd be welcome to do so now.
Good evening, I'm Todd Baloo. Um, I don't think I need to make many comments. We're happy to reduce the size of the dumpster. We're happy to, um, re-stripe the parking lot to meet your needs. I'll just leave it at that. Any other things I could address specifically?
Not a whole lot on my end. Other commissioners? It doesn't seem so. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Uh, is there anybody on Zoom to comment?
It doesn't seem like anybody would like to speak on this matter.
Okay, waiting just a pause for, uh, anybody to raise their hand on Zoom if you wish to comment. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
I moved.
Motion by Brian, support by Eric. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Um, I, we've seen this application before. I suppose not everybody on the commission may have seen this application before. I think that adding some multifamily housing in a vacant space, uh, in in this specific location makes a lot of sense for the same reasons. That I thought it made sense when I voted on it the previous time. Um, with some of the language around the dumpster, I wonder if. The the condition that reads that the trash calculations shall be provided to substantiate the need for the ten cubic yard dumpster. And then seven, that the dumpster enclosure be tall because that dumpster is tall. Um, I might, we talked about kind of the specificity and some of the conditions with the last application. I wonder if this might be an opportunity if the applicant. Um, is, is interested in kind of pursuing a reduced, uh, dumpster size or trash. is interested in kind of pursuing a reduced uh, dumpster size or trash enclosure that we, we um, maybe make those conditions a little bit less specific. In my mind, that could read something like the applicant shall provide trash condition or calculations to substantiate the need for a ten cubic yard dumpster or reduce the dumpster size accordingly. And then the proposed dumpster enclosure shall be nine feet in height due to the proposed uh, dumpster being eight feet in height. Um, or maybe just the proposed dumpster enclosure shall be um,
compliant with section one twenty-two dash six oh eight?
Compliant with section one twenty-two dash six oh eight. I'm glad you had that handy. Uh, any thoughts on those changes to the conditions?
Can you run those again?
Yeah, so, so this is just providing an out for the applicant to reduce the size of the dumpster in volume.
Hmm.
Uh, that would be uh, condition six, substantiate the need for a ten cubic yard dumpster or reduce the size of the dumpster accordingly. And then for condition seven, instead of saying shall be nine feet in height, we would just say shall be compliant with section one twenty-two dash six oh eight. Six oh eight?
I don't have the um, I don't have the code handy, so is, is item six also covered by one twenty-two dash six oh eight?
Are you asking if the um, if the landscaping is covered?
Not the landscaping, I'm sorry, uh, the trash calculations.
Um, yes, yes, I would believe so.
So that becomes one condition.
The dumpster and the dumpster enclosure shall be compliant with one twenty-two dash six oh eight.
I think six there and six in the packet are different, that's why.
Oh, I see, okay. How'd that happen? Did we get reordered? Uh, what, what Brian's asking about here is uh, item seven on your list.
Got you. Um, could you, you happen to have, I'm gonna ask Andy to pull up the ordinance really quickly. Yeah.
The plan approval is subject to engineering conditions. Uh, public services.
In my eyes.
Yeah, so what we have that, it's five, right, is the difference. There's a, a quick point of, of clarification before you share the um, the ordinance, Commissioner Smith has pointed out that in our packet, item five reads any new and existing landscaping is to be maintained uh, in good condition by the owner. On this screen, item five is site plan approval is subject to the Department of Public Services, the Fire Department and Yucca.
Should we read nine then?
The item that we have added that is not reflected in your list is uh, the maintenance agreement for the rain garden in the city's right of way.
And the reason why I um, did not include it in this is because that is part of the, I believe, engineering and also public services approval. They requested to see both of those. Or they both requested to see that.
Okay. So, so we don't have in our packet the item that reads site plan approval is subject to the Department of Public Services, the Fire Department and Yucca.
Yeah, and that was some, that is something that I would recommend that you add.
We'll need nine conditions then. Or maybe still eight, depending.
The one that we have that they don't have is the uh, applicant shall provide a maintenance agreement for the rain garden in the city's right of way. That's in our packet, it's not shown here. So yeah, we will have nine conditions. Our packet has eight, this list has eight, they're just a different eight. Site plan. Uh, any other discussion of the uh, site plan, the findings, the waivers or the conditions before we move to motions?
We get the confirmation on one twenty-two six oh eight?
Oh, yeah, Andy, could you share that?
I cannot on the screen, unfortunately. I got kicked for my permission. Or you need to stop sharing. Yep. Okay, let me share it on the screen.
Of the dumpster size and the enclosure height and that.
Yep, so the, the enclosure height rule where the enclosure needs to be a foot taller than the dumpster is this uh, D.
Okay.
So essentially, if the dumpster is bigger, the enclosure needs to be bigger.
Mm-hmm.
F is the other, I believe the other standard that we forget.
I think, I think Brian's question here is, does this part of the ordinance also cover the volume of the dumpster that we're conditioning? But those volume calculations are not included in this section of the.
There is no volume requirement.
So we would still need both of our conditions.
Can you put the conditions back up on the screen?
Wait, so you mean there's no volume requirements at all or just in that particular part of the ordinance?
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't have the volume calculations.
So, that means we just provide one as large as they want, subject to like occupancy calculations, like?
What was the need for number six on our list?
I think I Sorry, Josh, was the, was your interpretation that essentially, your opinion is that the dumpster is too big? It's, it's almost unnecessary big.
Yeah, that's.
But I think to Brian's question, that's not, that's not conditioned in the ordinance. That's not, that's not required in the ordinance is a dumpster of a certain size. Okay.
So as long as they're in compliance with that, with, I guess, whatever's covered in six oh eight, then they're, they can have one as large as they want, essentially?
As long as it's not, as long as it's, as long as it's not more than nine, the enclosure is not more, not more than ninety.
Interesting.
It's a very long, wide dumpster. Maybe we just get rid of six. It's unnecessary.
I think, I think, yeah, what it sounds like Brian's saying is that if there is nothing in the ordinance that would restrict an oversized dumpster, then is it a concern?
Yeah, if it's not tied to anything in particular.
Doesn't feel very painful to me, but I also, I can't get that excited about it either way. Like, as, as far as the site plan goes, that point feels inconsequential.
Yep.
Item five up there. Mm-hmm.
Somebody hit me with a motion.
Okay, I move to approve um, uh, the site plan for seven oh eight Pearl Street with the following uh, findings, waiver and conditions. Findings, one, the applicant substantially complies with section one twenty-two dash three ten, waiver one, a waiver from a one street tree due to the location of the utility pole and the existing tree aligns with the already established street trees along the same block face. Conditions, one, applicant shall adjust plans to allow for a van ADA space, two, applicant to pursue a variance for the driveway width, three, applicant to preserve variance with the, uh, for the excess of parking. Four, site plan approval is subject to engineering conditions. Five, any new and existing landscaping is to be maintained in good condition by the owner. Six, the proposed dumpster enclosure shall be nine feet in height. Eight, the applicant shall provide a maintenance agreement for the rain garden in the city's right of way, right of way and am I in eight now? No, I'm in eight, eight. My list, yeah. Site plan approval is subject to the Department of Public Services, the Fire Department and Yucca, and I so move. I think I said that already.
Can I offer a friendly amendment? Um,
You don't even have to, yeah.
Based on some of our discussion about the dumpster enclosure, uh, I would recommend that you condition that the dumpster enclosure is compliant with section one twenty-two dash six oh eight and being nine feet specifically.
Having to be nine feet.
I accept.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Support.
I think Amanda was first, motion by Brian, second by Amanda. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dunwoody.
Port.
Commissioner Bettis.
Port.
Commissioner Davis Jr. Commissioner Hollerfield.
Support.
Commissioner Smith.
Port.
Commissioner Shear.
Port.
Commissioner Jones Chance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Uh, the next item under new business, Bonnie, if you are ready.
Wait, no, um,
Bonnie's not ready.
If you go to the back of the agenda, there is the appointment for a planning commission liaison.
Yeah, so I guess in my estimation, the capital improvement plan is also new business, so I was gonna cover that before we cover the other items so that we can excuse Bonnie. It's get her home at a reasonable. Okay, let's tackle appointment of a planning commission liaison for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, Eric, I suppose you're free from this discussion, aren't you?
You wanna join the zone?
I feel like I should know this. Who, who is our current?
Jessica.
Jessica was, okay. Uh, is there anybody that is interested in serving as the planning commission liaison on the zoning board of appeals? Not everybody all at once. Um, yeah, do you have, uh, do you have a blurb on the zoning board of appeals that you want to share for reference to anybody who might be curious?
Yeah, I mean, it's not as scary as it may seem. Um, they barely ever meet. So, um, there won't be like a ton of meetings that you will have to attend. They do meet the first Monday of every month. Um, they're very nice. Um, I don't know if I have much more to say, like, they're, they're a cool group of people.
I'm the liaison for councils.
How can you resist?
Yeah, I will say in the two years that I was council's liaison to the Z B A, uh, it met exactly twice. And I, I forgot each meeting.
When you say they meet monthly on Mondays.
Only if there's business. Those were the two I missed.
Um, I can take that as the chair, right? That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that. I can, I can spare two evenings a year.
It might be three.
If they meet three times, I'm gonna be furious, though.
Do we need to like move that for you?
Uh, we probably do. Yeah, let's, uh, a motion would be in order to appoint me, the planning commission liaison to the Z B A.
Move that the planning Matt Dunwoody as the planning commission liaison to the Z B A.
Support.
Uh, motion by Amanda, support by Brian. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Bonnie, now we're ready for you.
Oh, okay.
Plus there are all sorts of spreadsheets that we're missing from what I did send you because I wanted to show them to council first. Not that they've ever changed anything. Everything's been exactly as I left it and presented it. But how many of you are familiar with the capital improvements plan and what it is supposed to be? So I will be very, very brief with my overview. It is meant to be a plan for the capital spending of the city over the coming six years. It helps us plan out major expenditures. These are largely meant to be one-time expenditures. Uh, some of them are recurring, so uh, motor pool, for instance, will replace vehicles every five years. That is not part of what I am presenting to you tonight because that's not core to what planning commission, you guys don't really care if I'm replacing a truck with a different truck. What you guys tend to want to weigh in on um, is generally, I should have sent that to you too, I'm sorry. Um, okay, thank you. Um, or generally the physical improvements. So the facilities and the roads are largely what we're going to see tonight. So, with no further ado.
I apologize, my Zoom is like acting up right now. Um,
Completely frozen, aren't you?
Yeah.
All right. So some more ado. We're just gonna go through really quickly the prioritization. So first, we um, prioritize obviously the projects that are mandatory. So those that address legal, regulatory or contractual requirements. Then, oh, next up is risk avoidance. So think of this as things that we could be sued for either doing correctly or not doing at all. So these are largely safety issues. Um, these could be for residents, our workers or our visitors. Cost avoidance is a new category in two thousand twenty-four. It's intended to uh, separate out sort of the issue of return on investment or cost reduction uh, from risk avoidance, which had been kind of bundled together a little bit prior to this. Strategic goals are those that address long-term community needs and goals. So they could be part of multi-year strategies for economic, social growth or sustainability. Um, they're generally called out in one of the adopted plans such as uh, Shape Ypsilanti or the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, or one of our many other policy plans that have been adopted. And then the final category is the added value category, um, which is more or less the nice-to-have uh, category. So these are things that everybody generally agrees would be nice or good, but they, or address a quality of life um, issue. But they do not uh, have a significant safety impact, a legal compliance. They don't necessarily save the city money, nor do they further the long-term strategic goals of the city in a meaningful way. And then I'm going to refer to, ne- next slide, please, the various different types of funds. So the city budget has different major accounts within it. So we have the general fund, that's where most of the city business comes from. With roads, we have a major roads fund. We have a local roads fund. Major roads are different from local roads are different from trunk lines. Not going to get into that tonight. I can bore you all another time. The rubbish fund, you won't see anything from that tonight. The capital fund is generally funded via our uh, transfers from our general fund. Um, it does not have a separate millage or bond or anything of that sort, but grant income generally does go in there too. Sidewalks is a separate fund that's generally been used to administer the city sidewalk program back when we had one uh, in the early two thousands. Now it's been used largely for our ADA sidewalk improvements. Parking fund is uh, funded basically via the parking revenue, and it goes towards capital improvements and the maintenance and um, infrastructure of our public parking. So that includes uh, our parking enforcement officers as well as signage, paving, fun stuff like that. And then motor pool, which we are not gonna talk about at all tonight unless you guys really uh, want to spend a lot more time here. Alright, next slide, please. This is incredibly tiny, thanks to PowerPoint and the need to go out to uh, twenty thirty-two. But overall, you'll see a twenty-five thousand dollar a year charge for a computer replacement. So this just accounts for the regular uh, replacement of the computers that you see in front of you here tonight. Thank you. Um, next up is City Hall C P M, that's uh, capital preventative maintenance. So that is things like uh, roof repair and replacement. And City Hall, we have a lot of door needs somehow. Alarm system improvements, lighting improvements, camera improvements, things that help the building survive a little bit better. Lot of plumbing and HVAC problems also. In City Hall. Next is the City Hall elevator modernization. This is something we've been working on for a couple of years now. Uh, we're a little bit limited in our timeline, basically, because there's one planner in the game. Um, that is budgeted five hundred thousand dollars. That is carrying over from the prior year. Next up is DPS yard rehabilitation. This is a pretty large um, item. It only goes out for two years because our budget is on a two-year cycle. And after about two years, this becomes a much larger question mark. So right now, we are in the DPS yard. The buildings need significant maintenance. We are also doing a programming study to see if the yard can even continue to serve our needs in the future. And then how we would rearrange it if we need to rearrange it. We're doing stabilization work. So, parallel to that, we are also um, doing a larger facilities assessment. So after the sort of one-year, two-year horizon, everything becomes a question mark. Do we put a lot of money into our facilities? What scale is that lot of money? For instance, we know that City Hall has foundation issues that we should probably address or at least evaluate. Um, has water intrusion issues. Uh, police station, similar. Uh, Fire Department, remarkably good condition. Uh, but these are all things that do need to be evaluated for the long term. And that's why we only budget out for those two years because of that question mark. Park Ridge Classroom Expansion, that is a project that Park Ridge has been talking about for a number of years, but is not yet quite brought to fruition. So we keep putting it off in the budget year after year after year. Same thing with the kitchen improvements. And the same thing with the senior center classroom addition. It's always just beyond that two-year budget horizon. It's always just beyond that two-year budget horizon. Senior Center HVAC, however, is not actually in this. Oh, no, there it is. Sorry. Uh even though I have the banded layers, sometimes I don't line up precisely, but that needs about $80,000 worth of complete HVAC replacement. Um the city has, just as a sidebar, different agreements with different facilities. So for instance, with the Rutherford Pool, the city owns it. However, the Friends of the Rutherford Pool are responsible for all of the capital items, all of the maintenance. All of the expenses having to do with it. With the senior center, the city is responsible for capital improvements like the HVAC or if the roof were to fail, we would fix it. Fun things like that. If they take on an optional improvement, such as I believe their patio improvement that they're doing, we'll stay out of that. But if something were to fail, we'll fix it. Uh Park Ridge is a completely different beast. We pay for uh half of two positions. We pay for the utilities. We pay for the alarm. We pay for uh the capital improvements. We have every capital improvement that is optional is a little bit more negotiated. It's a very uh agreement which challenges both parties every time we address something. But it's fun and they do great work. Uh so sidebar aside, back to our core facilities. The uh fire department, uh they have some building capital maintenance, preventative capital maintenance coming up as well. So they need some boiler work, some asbestos remediation. A little bit of plumbing work, but generally they need to put up $20,000 to $25,000 in their building almost every year just to keep it up. And that is actually a best practice. You should, in theory, be budgeting about 10% of a bu- building's value in capital preventative maintenance per year. So if you don't spend it that year, then you bank it so you can use it for when you need a new roof, you need a new boiler, you need new flooring, fun stuff like that. Uh fire department, building capital maintenance, then parking lot, concrete and drains. So that's actually a combination of two different projects. So behind the fire department and the police department is a very large retaining wall. In front of that retaining wall surrounding the fire department and the police department is basically a large expanse of concrete. That drains to the east of the police department. Recently, the police department has been seeing a lot of water in the basement. Also, the concrete upon which people park has gotten very broken up. So we're combining three projects. It's an assessment and repair of the retaining wall as one of the slabs has gotten about three and five eighths inches out of true. Um we are repairing the broken slabs of concrete and we are doing some repairs and uh water mitigation for the police department. So that is going to be a wee bit expensive. Uh $200,000 is the current thinking. Some of that will is going to be carried over from this year because we've begun the engineering process. We've even done a few of the smaller low-hanging fruit type repairs, but we anticipate going out to bid this summer for the larger project as a whole. The next big project coming up is the YPD carpet removal. That is an interesting one. Have any of you been into the fu- the police department? In all of their office areas, they have uh thin commercial carpet up to about yay high on the walls. That has been there since the 1970s. It is directly put over the drywall, so you can't steam clean it and it's challenging to vacuum. Um so it's time to have it removed. That involves not only removing the carpet, but also replacing the drywall upon which it was glued. So it sounds like a silly, small project. It is a silly, expensive project. Um but it is going to significantly improve uh the air quality over there, we believe, just because of the years and years and years of dust and deterioration in that carpet. Uh the next one is in-car camera system. So that is actually meant to be a sort of umbrella for all of YPD's equipment needs. So they have an in-car camera system. They have tasers. They have body cams. They have uh specialized um telephone monitoring system over there. They have fingerprint machines. And that actually, that is incorrect. That it's not $10,000 a year. That's closer to $80,000 a year for all of the YPD various equipment. Mine. Sometimes things don't transfer precisely from Excel to PowerPoint and then onward. And that is correct, Steve, and what council saw the other night, I believe. Uh also YPD, the women's locker room. As far as we can tell, that hasn't been touched since maybe the 1980s, when it was created out of a closet. So it's time to do a little bit of improvement. Uh freight house, we have some capital uh preventative maintenance scheduled for 26, 27 and for about $30,000. This year and next year, we have some cost avoidance slash strategic upgrades. Um so this year and into the coming budget year, uh the 24, 25 year, we're looking at doing floor repair. Um so if you've been in the freight house, you know that the floors are very historic, but also a little bit wavy. So we're looking at evening those out. Um and then also repairing the flooring in the the bathroom area. Uh then we're looking at doing some kitchen renovations. Uh that kitchen is perhaps from the 1980s, hasn't really been approved. Uh we're not looking to make it a commercial kitchen by any stretch of the imagination. But a little bit more functional and the aim behind that is really to help um maximize our return on investment and get a little bit better from the freight house because the freight house really is an income generating or is meant to be a bit of an income generating model. Not a huge amount, but at least self-sustaining. Next, oh, all of these are out of the 414 Capital Fund, which is funded out of the general fund. Next slide has the things from the other funds. So our roads fund, our uh sidewalk fund and our parking fund. So for parking, we have a little bit set aside for the freight house lot. Uh the DDA actually just released an RFP for the plaza renovations. That includes a little bit of uh looking at the the freight house parking lot, how to make that flow better, how to make that area work better. So we're, we had banked $50,000 for just a quick resurfacing. We're saving that to see if maybe we can get a little bit further with that money by working with the DDA. Uh we're also setting aside about $100,000 out of the parking fund to go towards the Frog Island um accessibility upgrades project, which also includes significant parking uh repair and paving. And then also setting aside $75,000 a year henceforth for parking lot uh repairs. So a lot of the parking lots do need to be resurfaced. Um uh pro and con, depending upon how you feel about parking. Um the ones that are free as they get resurfaced will also see parking interest as well, more than. Uh Parks Capital Projects. So this is currently funded through the county millage, the county mental health millage. So it's a transfer in from our public safety fund. We have been uh transferring in about 100 and to $150,000 per year. It's gone largely towards uh addressing deferred maintenance issues. It replaced some part, brought some play equipment in Candy Cane Park. This year it is addressing a lot of deferred maintenance issues as well as replacing a lot of our ADA playground chips. Um and replacing a lot of our damaged uh playground equipment, actually. Next year, I believe, is going to be the last guaranteed year for that millage that is going up for election again at the end of this year. Next also is parks, and that is the Frog Island Accessibility Improvements. We're currently in the design phase for that. And anticipate breaking ground um towards the end of this calendar year, beginning this year. Also in the parks, umbrella is the Peninsula Dam Removal. Um this number here is both correct from a budgeting perspective, but not correct from a communications perspective. So there is a significant amount of grant income coming in, and this actually also applies to the Frog Island Accessibility Project. Significant amount of grants and matches coming in. We still need to budget for the total amount of the project because that money is both coming in and going out. So the city's total commitment currently for the Peninsula Dam is only $500,000. Likewise, the Frog Island Accessibility, our uh commitment is only, only $100,000. Now we're into roads, which is everybody's funnest part. Uh so Cornell, we are looking to do that work in calendar year 27. Uh Cross Street Bridge, we have some funding set aside for calendar year 26 and 27. We have $3.5 million from the state. We are looking for federal funding as well in the amount, roughly equivalent amount. Um all total with our share is going to be around eight million. Um not all of that is going to be out of our pockets, but it is still going to be a heavy lift. And that is not a replacement. That is a redecking with some pier cap repair. But a little closer on the horizon is Harriet Street, so First Street to Hawkins. We're breaking that up into two projects so people can still access their neighborhood. Uh but that is going to be a complete reconstruction. We're pairing that with Yucca's water main replacement work and plan to do some traffic calming uh work in that area as well. And then this year, so running into next budget year, we have work going on in the La Forge and Factory Bridges. Factory is currently underway. Uh La Forge is next up, I believe, starting in late June, early July. Uh we also have uh funded through another county millage, the County Roads Millage, uh a local road pavement preservation and stormwater improvements program uh that will cover crack ceiling, other ca- capital preventative maintenance, fun things like that. That only goes out to 25, 26 because that millage expires a little bit later than the public safety millage, but they're already gearing up for that campaign. And then finally, the city sidewalk uh replacement program. So city-owned sidewalks. There's always going to be something we have to replace. Um this is basically a budget placeholder. $20,000, for instance, would do probably City Hall millage. Maybe not because it's tricky, but it's the right ballpark. So. Any questions on that?
On that last item, um I know sidewalks have been all the rage, right? And that's not necessarily like planning commission.
But they are very.
Necessarily, but I'm curious what the plan is this year. I know that there's been been in hearing increasing noise about picketed sidewalk issues.
So sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner until and unless we hear differently from council. The city has no plans to embark upon a sidewalk replacement program. The way that has worked in the past is if somebody um does have a sidewalk that is marked by the city and the city uh mandates that they replace it. If they choose not to replace it themselves, then the city would sort of, kind of like our current code enforcement process, but a little bit more formal and a little bit more friendly. But if if somebody is unable to do it themselves or thinks that they would get a better price, the city would essentially go out to bid for all of these sidewalks and then charge that back to the homeowner. So it is still costly for the adjacent property owner. But it is also how we used to do it, how council may choose to do it in the future, is council's choice. Currently.
Anything you'd care to add, Steve? Anything you'd care to add?
There's been a lot of conversations about that, obviously. But um I have talked with Andrew about uh the possibility of returning that program so that there's um consolidation. It's really hard to get uh contractors come up for small jobs um so doing that. So that could be, actually have a constituent who's trying to do this himself by getting a contract and going out to the neighbors. So that's fun. But I I'd kind of like to see you go back to that.
I would find out that that does have an overhead cost in terms of staff time.
It does. Yep.
Not the neighbor doing it, though.
No.
That's easy for staff time.
All right, but if I mean if that.
Provided he does it correctly.
Right.
Indeed, it does. I believe in years of past, it was a 10% upcharge.
Okay, good to know. I appreciate it.
I know I went through all of that really quickly because it is 9:45 at night. But if you have any questions, let me know.
Anything else for Bonnie?
I do have two more slides.
Take it away.
These are just sort of fun bonus slides. Uh also included in the capital improvement plan is a list of the city-owned real property that is not either a gap parcel, which I can expound on at length, or a city-owned right-of-way. So uh there's two slides of this. First slide is largely what we either have uh more or less available for sale. Things that are business facilities, property that is our parking lots, um land that we are retaining for other reasons. And land that is owned by um city-associated entities that are not the city. So the West Commerce Park uh Owners Association is a subsidiary of the Economic Development Association, which is ki- a kind of like the DDA, but with a scope, with a geographic scope of the entire city. Um and then the Maple Street Parking Lot is DDA-owned as well as the Riverside Park West Link, which is a pathway essentially that exists between the Riverside Art Center and the Riverside Art Center Parking Lot that connects hereon to the Riverside uh park. And then the next slide is a list of all of our recreation or recreation-ish properties such as you know, the vacant lot that adjoins Park Ridge, the pedestrian alleyway in Depot Town. Those aren't parks, but they're recreating. So. Any questions on these?
Those two showed up blank in my.
Which now?
Those last two showed up blank in mine.
I'll have to double-check those tax pins. The Edith Happily Tot Lot or Edith Happily Park is at the intersection. Uh it's right around the corner from like actually. It's at the corner of Grant, Elm and Pearl. Um it's about the size of two house lots. Uh the Ainsworth Tot Lot is not actually a tot lot. It has been called a tot lot forever, but it is a completely empty field behind the houses in the south circle of Ainsworth. So you know how Ainsworth, you've got the north one and then you've got the park in the middle. The south part of Ainsworth, you have an empty lot in the middle. And that's what the Ainsworth one is.
Were you talking about the last two lines in this table or the last?
Last two slides.
Okay.
I was curious if plans to put this report in our minutes so that we'll have it physically. It's just hard to see on the screen. It's gonna, well, Josh emailed us.
There, it just, those last two slides were blank in my, in my copy.
Yes.
Yeah, I had I had more than that. I think that was blank when I downloaded.
Yep. So what you guys received in your packet was basically just the text. It didn't have any of these tables. Yeah.
I'm sending it to y'all right now.
Thank you.
And then when the capital improvements plan is officially adopted by council, it's going to go this data on the city website. Any questions about these?
Down here. Thanks for hanging around. Appreciate it.
Got a lot of emailing done.
Um let's see, that covers the items that we have under new business, um except for, I think, three small items. Eric, anything that you want to share on the record?
Yeah, so um I have been proud to serve the commission for about four years now. And uh I unfortunately bust design because of the fact that I am uh leaving the city of Ypsilanti, uh relocating as of the end of this month uh to Detroit. So with that, I will have to, uh as of the the adjournment of this meeting, I will be designing my official. It has been my pleasure to serve with all of you. But really proud thing. So I appreciate all.
We've been lucky to have you. I hope that uh I hope that you find a comfortable home in Detroit. We'll miss you here.
And the city tax.
The worst part, it's actually so much worse.
I thought the worst part was gonna be missing me.
That's that's gonna be like.
Yeah.
Join another planning commission and see how.
There you go.
Yeah, seriously. I know. I've heard stories that I've sat in. So I know we've got it good.
Uh one of the other small items I wanted to mention in new business, um for future minutes, I would appreciate if we could have public comments identified. Um just because, hey, we've talked about that a bit before. It might have been before Josh was with us. Um, just because, hey, we've talked about that a bit before. It might have been before Josh was with us, but. Um, when it comes to items, presentations, old business, new business, um, when we talk about opening. The public comment for people to comment on general things for which a public hearing is not scheduled. It is useful, I think, for them to have some record of what public hearings are scheduled or not. Um, so at some points in our history, we've had like, for something like seven oh eight Pearl Site Plan, it would say parentheses, public, public.
Agenda.
In the agenda, yes.
Okay, did I?
You said minutes and so I was like, what are you talking about?
Okay.
But I had the same, when you, when you opened the public hearing, I was like, wait, is it a public hearing?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last point, why did we add public comment at the end of the meeting? Because I think everybody hates it.
That's in the bylaws.
Crap, okay. Anything else for new business before we jump to our last public comment?
There is um, the sign memo.
Sign memo, okay.
Sign memo.
That's a, that's a big one, isn't it? Um, okay. Uh, staff presentation?
Yeah, so um, basically as of last night, um, city council was deliberating on the. Uh, EMB sign ordinance. Uh, essentially, they were particularly interested in the um, size requirement. Um, you know, which basically um, as stated, required area height and setbacks, the maximum area for an electronic. Message board, uh, signs shall be no greater than fifty percent of the zoning district's maximum area. For freestanding or building mounted signs. The maximum height and minimum setbacks shall comply with the zoning district's allowances for freestanding or building mounted signs. Um, as part of their discussion, um, I believe it was council member, uh, Tucson and King who um, were discussing with. Second Baptist Church and proposed a thirty, and proposed a thirty-five square foot um, maximum. For um, the same districts that EMBs are proposed in. So I believe that would cover every district. Um, every district that EMBs are permitted in. Um, with that said, uh, that raised concerns for staff because. For example, in the core neighborhood zoning district, the freestanding size, uh, sign size requirement is um. Maximized at sixteen square feet and with allowing for a thirty-five square foot uh, maximum EMB. That basically um, you know, uh, encourages EMBs throughout the city. Uh, with that said, um. The uh.
Can I ask real quick, just on that point before we move on, would the sixteen square foot restriction govern a sign in that case? Like. If, if us, if an EMB is assigned and a sign is limited to sixteen square feet, then the EMB would be limited to sixteen square feet in those zones as well, correct?
No, uh, city council proposed to just make it thirty-five square feet just across the board.
Yeah, but it is still a sign, right?
Yeah, and they're proposing.
Are about specific for electronic message for signs, not all signs, just electronic message.
Correct, correct.
So if it's not electronic, it can't be enormous?
Correct.
Correct. They, they did.
Got kicked back to us.
They passed that amendment, they did pass that amendment, but kicked it back to us um. For further discussion to um. Uh, to kind of reconsider uh, whether or not we would like to um, change the fifty percent to seventy-five or a hundred or whatever you guys would like. Um, or this could um, trigger us just discussing. The um, overall sign ordinance in general, since that has been something um, staff has been interested in, and I. I'm not sure if planning commission has been, but um. You know, it will allow for us to just look at our entire ordinance in general.
Can I point out something really quick that, that thirty-five square feet is nearly two billboards? Stacked. What's that?
It's five by seven, yeah, it's not.
Oh, oh, sorry. Right, okay. All right, I read this. This was a long packet. I was like, did, did I read that?
Be very interested in discussing this at our June meeting. I think that was maybe the recommendation I saw in the memo was to. To have a larger discussion, uh, because frankly, for me, this brings me back to not wanting it in the core neighborhood. Um, so.
Is there anything that you'd wish to expand on in terms of what council needs from planning commission?
Sure, I was uh. Sitting this one out, listening to the discussion because I didn't really have an opinion of until they, they decided to make it. Or feet, and, and the question was compatibility with the other uh, other zones. Um, and that's why. The, the caution was that people were responding to the applicant and not to the policy itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, people wanted to bend it backwards to, to allow the church to have the sign that they wanted, but at the same time, it then. Created complications for the rest of the city. And so, one thing that was uh, discussed was. You know, excuse me, uh, the question of safety in terms of how big the sign was, how, you know, it's not scrolling. For safety reasons, so the, the safety consideration and the reliability came up uh, in terms of. Uh, is there a way to regulate this by the speed at which traffic is passing? And to me, that's kind of a weird thing because you're, you're getting car traffic, but you're also getting people walking by. Like, you know, the. The discussion was, was, they were struggling to try to, to uh, allow this. And then the other part of the discussion was that. Um, sticking with the way it's worded and then having it be uh. Waived in that particular way, so having, having everything be consistent throughout the city uh. Allowing for the church to apply for a way.
So am I correct in understanding that the, the preference of council is that. The allowance for electronic message boards is evenly applied throughout all of the zones?
Right, the question, the question they had was why the fifty percent, why is it fifty percent of the, of the sign size instead of a hundred or seventy-five?
You know, I mean, that percentage is a little bit arbitrary, right? Like there, that number can be whatever we want it to be. Um, but it, it feels like that is still proportional to the sign size in different zones, which varies, right? So I'm, I'm sort of, I'm, I'm hung up on, on a couple of things here because even if we say it's going to be seventy-five percent of the sign size or a hundred percent of the sign size. Then it varies zone to zone because the size of allowed signs vary zone to zone.
Right.
Right, so, so. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm hearing from council is both a preference to be a different percentage. Of, or, or at least justification for the percentage of the sign size we're using, but also that we don't tie the sign size to anything that varies zone to zone. Those feel incompatible to me.
That was pretty much the discussion.
Okay.
Um, slash, make it so that this particular applicant can have the biggest possible sign.
Well, but it sounds like.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth because I understand.
It sounds like council was hesitant about shaping the sign ordinance to this applicant. Is that my understanding or is?
That was the caution.
Is council, is council hesitant about shaping it to this applicant or eager to shape it to the applicant? I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm understanding.
A lot of the, a lot of the discussion was tailored towards the particular sign application.
Uh-huh.
Um, but the mayor uh, cautioned them about. You can't do that. You have to, you have to consider the policy, the policy and, and how it affects.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I guess I'm all about Second Baptist, you know, they offered themselves up as a polling place. They do all kinds of stuff for their community. And a lot of other churches opt out, so, you know, all about them. Um, but I have a couple of questions. Um, I know this is in the uh, neighborhood corridor, I think, but Messiah's Temple on. Uh, Harriet, um, has a pretty substantial sign. I don't know that it's as big as five by seven. But it seems, I mean, it's pretty big and I feel like it's adequate. Um, are we, when we're measuring the sign, are we just measuring this as the lighted portion of the sign? So we're not including any. Um, any uh, posts or anything like that, okay? And.
It would just be the, it would be the face of the sign.
And the Second Baptist knows this. So I'm just trying to figure out because this seems like a really large. Sign and I can't imagine that they actually need it. And if, if the goal of council is to get to. A result that meets this particular, you know, property's need.
Right.
Then. I mean, I, I don't see why we change anything, really.
Yeah, and, and two things I want to add to that. One of those things is, you know, we have this process where residents can apply for. Planning commission to consider changes to the zoning ordinance, right? And it is prompted by a specific need of a specific resident. But it's up to us to kind of consider whether that is a benefit to the city. And so it's not unrelated to the Second Baptist application because they are. You know, the party that, that kind of solicited the city to reconsider that restriction. Um, the second point that I want to make, Brian had um, had considered whether the, the church that pursued that application. Uh, had the size of sign in mind. I think that we have uh, that party represented on the Zoom call, so we might uh, welcome them to. Join the meeting if they want to comment on that themselves.
Looks like it's just the city.
Hey, Mr. Jordan, I'm going to allow you to speak. Uh, one moment, please. Okay, Mr. Jordan, you should be able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, uh, thank you for allowing me to come before you. And I hate that we have to do this, but as we looked at the language. Specifically, the fifty percent uh, maximum. Now that only applies to the digital portion of the sign. So. If you've got a sixteen square foot sign, your digital portion can only be eight square feet. So that's where the problem comes in. We're not talking about a full thirty-five square foot sign with all of the, the, the whole thing lit up. That's not what we're talking about. But in order to meet traffic, based on the traffic analysis. We've got ten thousand vehicles going by that, on that thoroughfare uh, in a day. At speeds of about forty-five miles an hour, if, if, if we're lucky, if not exceeding that. But this language about the fifty percent, I believe I heard somebody say is arbitrary. It is arbitrary. It's not based on any uh, visibility studies. It's not based on any safety studies. But a, and to that point, Sterling Heights, for example, they only allow one third of their signs, uh, of their sign to be digital. But they allow up to a hundred and fifty square foot signs. So what they do is it's a case by case. It's not a one size fits all. So for example, Olive Street, on the corner of Olive Street and North Hamilton. They're, they're, they're um, different environment. It, it, their conditions are totally different than if you're on South Hamilton. So they could use an eight square foot sign. But certainly you couldn't use it on, on uh, South Hamilton, an eight square foot sign and not cause a public problem with traffic and safety. I don't think that was the intention of this uh, uh, this ordinance when you started it out. You did not do this to create a problem. And it does create a problem. And that's what, that's where our concern is. And the language could be just, it could be remedied very easily by just modifying. It could stay at fifty percent. But just that the total square footage be determined based on the environmental conditions. And not to exceed thirty-five square feet for a permanent freestanding ground sign. If you had that language in there, this problem will, will resolve.
Thanks. And just so I'm clear on that, the problem in your estimation is that for. For the zone that the Second Baptist Church is in, the fifty percent of the allowed freestanding sign size is not. Is not big enough to fit the sort of sign that you're envisioning for the amount of traffic you have passing.
It's not big enough to be readable. And that's the whole intent of a sign is that it be readable. And you don't want to create. A, a, a public, it wants the sign to be a public benefit. And it's not if you have only eight square feet of a digital sign. That's the concern. And like I said, so the Olive Street and North Hamilton, they're still, they're in the same zone as us. But they're on the other end, totally different conditions.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification there. Appreciate it.
If we go from sixteen to eight, fifty percent.
And so the other part of it was, if you're going to keep fifty percent, make this something twice.
I can't hear if you, can't hear you guys.
Um, yeah, so I, I think that if I'm gathering the question, kind of, kind of piecing together some of that input with what we're hearing from. From council, it's not a question of having the electronic message board sign necessarily be consistent throughout the zones. Regardless of the freestanding sign, but making that freestanding sign size consistently larger throughout the city so that. Electronic message boards, whatever fraction of the sign size they may be allowed to be would still be larger themselves.
Oh, this makes more sense now.
Yeah.
So I can get a two by four sign, doesn't make a ton of sense. Yeah, two by four sign doesn't make a ton of sense on, if you're going forty miles an hour.
So, so for this, if it was this particular applicant. And we just did what council wanted, which was to give them a special exception. So, um, I can say that because they're our council. So, um. This applicant will then get a sixteen foot. Digital sign. Or would they get a thirty-four, thirty-five square?
They would get a thirty-five foot sign with half of that being electronic messaging. So to me, the, my question last night and tonight is why not change the percentage to higher? Thing, so a sixteen foot sign would give you more electronic messaging. Why do you need a thirty-five?
Josh, go on.
I, I might be wrong, but from my understanding, it was that they would get a thirty-five square foot EMB period.
Based on the motion that was put.
Just based, yeah.
I didn't understand that at all.
That's how I read the memo. Yeah. So I, I, I don't want to get into the ton, ton of detail. I'll just lay it out here as the most antagonistic sign guy. Um, I felt like we were rushed into reviewing EMB because we had an applicant that wanted to make an application. We kind of bent over backwards and in planning commission realm, my opinion. I don't think we should be rushed into making a decision. Uh, if we. Do respond to council, because this exact question is like where we're getting into. Is it eight feet? Is it sixteen? Is it thirty-five? Is it, what is it? So that's just my opinion for the commission, actually.
Yeah, because council's meeting on the twenty eighth, right? And so. Part of the discussion here is planning commission has the option to kind of clarify or reaffirm some of our intentions ahead of that twenty-eighth meeting. Um, if we tabled this until June, when we have time to consider that. With kind of the rest of our packets for the June meeting, um, does that interfere with council's timeline?
If I may clarify, from my understanding with conversing with city today, I. It sounds like the, because the motion was to table, the, the item is. Presumably going to be brought, brought up again at the, at the five twenty-eight, the May twenty-eighth meeting.
Right, the two options were to either set it aside to a specific date or table.
Or table.
And at the next council meeting for tabling, you'd have to bring it off the table at that meeting for discussion.
Yep. So I think it, it's, it could be on the agenda if council decides to untable it, right? At, it may meet hypothetically, it could be on the May meeting. So I think you should make any kind of motion. Either reaffirming your stance on. On the fifty percent, uh, not recommending the thirty-five. Or just simply coming to a consensus that we advise a broader. More in-depth.
Ryan?
Maybe I'm desensitized. I, I just uh, you know, I, I was just in Las Vegas and, and New York City, so maybe. Maybe I, I, I just, I just don't think this is worth spending a whole lot of time on. Um, this is pretty minor. And I think if we just change it to a hundred percent, we got a sixteen square foot sign. Run it, I mean, who? We're, we're, we're going to spend a month talking about eight square feet. I'm not, I'm not into it.
Eight square feet in G C, right? Eight square feet in G C, right? Or we're in neighborhood corridor.
So it just takes a.
G C, it could be up to fifty.
This is in this case, this case it's sixteen, right? So we're just taking a hundred, a hundred percent of whatever the sign is allowed in whatever district.
You said in G C it can be how much?
Fifty square feet. The G C allows for a hundred square feet of maximum allowable signage, so it can be.
Yeah, but these are.
Increase, so if we were a hundred, if it was a hundred percent, it'd be a hundred square foot sign.
It is a general, yeah, these are, you know. More businessy area.
Like Wasna, North Huron River, um, part of East Forest. Echorus.
I just think this is our job.
Forest, I mean.
Yeah, I think, and I think this is a very relatively simple, non-complicated decision that we are making way more complicated than needs to be.
Steve?
I'm the outlier on council. Um, through the whole discussion, I was not participating in the discussion because. The the acknowledgement that it complicated the entire code for different zones was acknowledged. And that you are the people to address it. So your timeline, you're. You're doing that, if if it puts a crimp in it, then, and that needs to be addressed, then it needs to be addressed. So I'm, I've, I don't have a timeline, there were statements last night, the urgency of this relative to other things is is.
We got the memo at four forty-five today with uh kind of council's wishes here. I'd have a hard time. I'd have a hard time based on this discussion with changing my opinion from what we voted on previously. I think that it warrants some more discussion than we were able to kind of prepare for before today's meeting. Uh, I'd be in favor of us discussing this in June. Uh, I'd be in favor of us not providing any direction to council on it at all. Um, and if council chooses to untable it and reconsider something, uh, that would be their prerogative.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that statement?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
A friendly addition to it.
Uh, would you like to make a motion?
Well, I just think um, I think council should know that we want to review. Their their actions and the sign policy in our June meeting, not that we're not doing anything.
And if we plan to review it in June, there might be some specific requests. We could ask of staff to help us understand the implications of the various options, perhaps? Like the comment you made about fifty square feet. Yeah, I mean, that's helpful. I think it's, I think it might be helpful to have just.
Know what that looks like in other zones.
Just for instance, um, that I don't think is overly complicated. I mean, if we go to a hundred percent with a maximum of fifty square feet. Boom, that's exactly what we got on the maximum end, and it doesn't really hurt anything on the minimum. I mean, I just.
What do you mean it doesn't hurt anything on the minimum?
I just, I don't. Maybe someone can educate me on this opinion, but I just, and or maybe I've just spent too much time recently out of town, but I just. There's a giant sphere in the middle of.
We're not there, right?
And and.
For for my part. For my part, I I don't think that it makes sense for Ypsilanti to have different sign. Uh, to have a uniform sign size requirement across every zone.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be if we put a maximum at fifty square feet. At fifty square feet. So then, when you get the, anywhere, it's just, just the maximum. If you got the fifty percent.
He was saying fifty percent.
Fifty percent of, or a hundred percent, rather.
Except if you, the maximum.
But why isn't it?
Then it would be.
I guess.
Right, so a hundred percent of.
Let's go to Phil for a second.
The part that I'm confused about, the 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 ordinance says that each area has. Uh, uh, maximum size, right? So if we do a hundred percent per area, so they can still have the sign they want. And it doesn't affect that, all they can do is maximize the liable side and the E M B. I I don't see what the problem.
The point of this, the point of the 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 staff made was that. In some areas, we're talking about an eight square foot difference, and in other areas, we're talking about a fifty square foot difference in that size. When we say going from fifty to a hundred percent. Which is why he's adding the cap.
Yeah, but yeah, but if if, I I've talked about the, but the base sign, no matter what kind of sign it is, the the maximum size is whatever that size is, right? And so we're saying as far as the E M B, it it's a hundred percent of that sign, not a hundred percent of this, you know. This other number that's out there, you know, I'm not saying that, it's just about the size. Whatever size that you allow, the a hundred percent of it can be E M B. I I don't get what the problem is.
And I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure I actually have a disagreement with that. I'm disagreeing with telling council, go ahead and do what you want right now. That's what I'm disagreeing with. I I I don't know if I agree or disagree with Brian on the hundred percent. I disagree. Doing it right now.
If I may, Commissioner. Eric, uh, I, you you can make a motion to reaffirm a stance on. Uh, your, what you had previously passed or on the thirty-five as proposed by council, if you so strongly choose.
I don't get the impression that we as a commission do. Uh, yeah, I I think what I'm saying is that, given, given what staff presented in the packet when we discussed this to the last time, right? I looked at ordinances from neighboring municipalities, we looked at examples of, you know, typical signs that would kind of fit those requirements. Given kind of our timeline here, I don't have any, uh, I don't have an opportunity to kind of review that. I don't have an opportunity to see any new data on that front. And so me, me kind of jumping to a different conclusion here without any new data feels arbitrary. Um, and so I'm I'm with Mike that I don't. I'm not particularly inclined to reaffirm anything. I'm not particularly inclined to accept anything. I am inclined to table this and discuss it in June.
Support? I agree. You should wait.
And I just wanted to make clear that council can act.
Yep, they can, they can do whatever they want and and then they can deal with the fallout, yep.
Uh, I would, we we can always submit a memo to staff that we're going to revisit the discussion in our June meeting. A motion would be in order.
So I'd make the motion that Matt just said. Check, check the tape.
Yeah, we are asking staff to submit a memo to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand their urgency. Support?
Motion by Mike. We're asking for staff to send a memo just to let council know that we will take this up in our June meeting and.
Comment earlier, I defer to your. Notes from last night's meeting. I wasn't trying to challenge what you were saying because I was going for the beginning of that discussion. I came back in the middle of it.
Sounds like y'all were a little all over the map.
We got out after eleven.
We don't, we don't have any idea what that's like. Um, I think that's it for business on the E M B updates. Yeah? Okay, uh, a motion would be in order to.
Other than, I never did get my light readings.
Light, yeah, the the light readings for the sign.
Yep, we still, no. Never got the light readings, never got the, whether or not staff is going to get a light meter to enforce this ordinance or any of the other sign ordinances.
We did actually just find a um light reading, uh, like meter, basically. Um, so we have not had a chance to um basically test the um brightness of the sign on. Or the billboard on ninety-four, um, but that is something that we will be looking to do currently. Um, the community service director is trying to allocate who it will, who will be essentially doing that work.
I I can walk down the street and do it.
Yes, is there, do you think that would help? Sign discussion?
Yeah, because you know, if you know, if we're talking about distraction, you know, while you're driving and, you know, the the flicker rate and. All that, that that encompass, you know, the, that makes a difference, you know, because if you look at the the intensity of light of about ninety-four. Compared to the intensity of light of the the uh E M B or Huron Street that, you know, in the township at that church there. You know, there there's a drastic change there, you know, so, you know, that that would be, you know, contributing. To the discussion, you know, and also that I didn't know that uh that I just saw the other day that I didn't realize. See, I guess E M U is uh exempt from coming to us as well. Because they have E M B right there on Cross Street that I just happened to see the other day, you know, so.
Would you like an example of that reading?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we know that's beyond our, we can just look at that one, we don't need a reading to know that, that's beyond our standard. You can see it in the township.
I need that that digital printout.
What are all the exemptions?
Well, I think you're, I think it must be the the exempt because it was founded before Ypsilanti.
Because I know, because I raised concern about the construction by the city itself, you know. It's like, okay, they build the buildings, but they never come before us, you know, so. It's like, here's this new sign that I just happened to see, I don't know, this could have been there for a while, I just noticed it the other day. And just like, oh, I don't remember them coming before us, but we have a discussion about E M B, you know, as it related to Second Baptist Church, you know, so. That was just one of my concerns.
So just remind me, was there, was there, was that an official motion to communicate to council or is that a broad consensus? Sorry.
Uh, that was a motion by Mike, it got a second by Brian. And uh, all in favor of that can say. I oppose, that motion has carried. That concludes our E M B business. We have our uh final public comment of the evening. A motion would be in order to open that public comment.
So moved, ooh, support.
Motion by Brian, support by Eric, all in favor say aye.
Thank you, the, there's one person online, Mr. Jordan, you, that's public comment, if you have any additional comments.
We're getting you, I'm muted right now. And again, public comments are going to be limited to three minutes.
You should be allowed to speak.
Yeah, just just want some clarification about the return in June. Are you, is staff working to get the necessary information to this body so that you can make a decision in June? What are we doing? Or or we just start this all over in June? What's the, what what, I I wasn't clear on what you're doing.
We're, we're taking up in June the same question that Planning Commission is faced with tonight, which is. Uh, being compelled by council based on the meeting last night to reconsider the position of fifty percent of the sign size for E M Bs. And to uh consider their draft amendment for a thirty-five foot uh maximum E M B size. So Planning Commission doesn't wish to uh determine whether uh we are in favor of that tonight or not. We will take up that question in June. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
With with the understanding that it's gonna be, it could be on council's agenda before then.
Giving council ideas, Andy.
Just want to be clear for on all, all angles.
Alright, thank you.
I don't believe we have anybody else present for public comment, so a motion would be in order to close the public comment.
So moved.
Or motion by Eric, support by Phil, that brings us to the end of the meeting. It's your last meeting.
And your last, your last official action is to close the voice of.
Just to make sure, um, we are proposing. Review our entire. Right, we're just reviewing the E M B section.
We are reviewing specifically the draft amendment to what we presented to council by council.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Right, I uh move to close the meeting.
Uh, motion by Eric, support by Amanda, all in favor say aye.
With your feet.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.
If we opposed it, he couldn't leave, so.
Stuck with us.
Followed by a motion that Eric must return.
You gotta come back and do a redo and.
I'm like, oh, for the sign thing.
Come back.
Oh, we're now.